Welcome to the regular city council meeting for the city of Eureka. I'm glad you're all here and I'm really grateful I'm here. And now we're going to read the land acknowledgement. The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Jerojigi. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. And can we get a, or have a roll call, please?
Mayor Bergel?
Here.
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Moulton?
Here.
Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez? Well, cancel, there he goes. Councilmember Fernandez? He can't, I, Councilmember Fernandez, are you there? I see you. Councilmember Fernandez, this is a roll call.
Present, sorry, I couldn't hear, now I can.
Yes, sorry about that. And Councilmember Contreras Deloche is absent tonight.
Thank you. And would all too care to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and so we do have a change to our agenda. I three will be removed and discussed at our next meeting. Do we have a report out of closed session?
The clerk is going to report out of closed session tonight, Mayor?
Great.
Mayor and council, Councilmember Fernandez has requested that he be allowed to participate through teleconference, so during closed session, he provided the reason that was adequate to allow for teleconference, which is he's taking care of family. And on a motion by Councilmember Castellano, moved a second by Councilmember Bauer, three yes votes, council allowed Fernandez, Councilmember Fernandez to participate.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, and so for our mayor's announcements, first, I wanted to bring up Old Town Rotary to talk about the Rotodendron Parade. Hi and welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. Thank you for taking a few minutes to talk about the Rotodendron Parade. My name's Colin Ewing, I'm here representing the Rotary Club of Old Town Eureka with, you want to introduce yourself?
And Amanda Moxon, also from Old Town Eureka.
And we have Barry here with us as well. Thank you so much, we understand that you're going to voice your support tonight and sponsor the 57th Annual Rotodendron Parade, which takes place Saturday, April 27th at 10:00 a.m. The theme this year is the roaring twenties. I brought a poster, I saw a couple up in City Hall here, so that's great. So this is our poster this year with some artwork by a local high school student from Eureka High, Sophia Stem Falk, she's a junior in the Drama Club at Eureka High, so very talented artist. And there, our grand marshal this year is Evo Fanukeye. And so I understand he was born in the twenties, I don't know Evo, but it sounds like he's a really neat guy. So there's no entry fee, we're welcoming bands to participate for a cash award, and there's prizes for the Rotodendron Trophy for the use of flowers and vegetation, a prize for the Sweet Steaks Trophy for the most beautiful float, a prize for the Mayor's Trophy, which I believe Mayor Kim will be judging for the most original, and the Grand Marshal's Trophy, the best use of the parade theme. So we hope everyone will visit eureka-rodieparade.com to learn more, and hopefully everybody will come out to the parade on the 27th at 10:00 a.m.
Yeah, I think Colin covered most of it, but you know, we're really proud of this community event. We have a lot of great local sponsors that come back every year to help us put this on, local, you know, youth bands that come out and participate and look forward to it every year, so I think you can expect to see a really good community turnout. It was mentioned to me at one of our last district conferences, which our district for Rotary ranges from Crescent City to Napa and is quite large, and we are one of the smallest clubs that puts on one of the biggest community events, so we're really proud to keep that going. So, thank you for your continued support.
Yeah, one more thing, you know, I just moved to Eureka from Colorado two years ago, and one of the things that has been really special to me about this community is the community events. You know, you've got Friday Night Markets every Friday throughout the spring, summer, and fall, you've got the Arts Alive on first Saturdays, and this parade is one of those amazing events, so hopefully everybody will come out and celebrate Eureka and enjoy the parade.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll be there. Every year for years. Okay, and then our next group coming up will be the Discovery Museum. Happy to see them here. Just completed their perilous plunge, which I quasi participated in this year.
Crew with me? Hi, everybody.
Hi.
My name's Lynn Langdon, I am the Board Chair for the Redwood Discovery Museum, and I have with me a few of my esteemed board members. We have Chrissy Duncan, Ken Pinkerton, and Tina Standish. And we just wanted to take a little bit of time tonight to thank you for letting us be here, first of all. For almost thirty years, the Discovery Museum has been an integral part of Eureka in helping the families of the community learn, grow, play together. And one of the things that you may or may not know is that we're a scrappy nonprofit, we have no national affiliation support. We were started by two Kens, if you will, Ken Pinkerton, who's a retired science teacher, and Ken Collins, who was an attorney. So every dime that we collect is hard-earned. So one of these things that, this past couple, or two weeks ago, we held our 23rd Annual Perilous Plunge. And we know that for everything that looks seamless and effortless, we know that there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that goes on with that, and this would not be able to happen without the city of Eureka. So that's why we're here tonight, we want to thank the city of Eureka for all of the support that everyone provides to us. So everything from my permit approvals, the ladder from the fire department to help get us out of the bay quickly, the endless calls at all hours to Donald, a former board member, Shannon Fazio, who is a logistic queen and helps every year, she's a former board member, to Mayor Kim Bergel for jumping in endlessly to the bay. We also have Katie, who developed Linda, our octopus exhibit. And over the years, we've had honorary bartenders and judges, and we just would not be able to do it without the city's support. So one of the things that started a few years ago was creating a special recognition award for those entities behind the scenes that people don't think about. So this is a special recognition award, in the past, it's gone to things like Humboldt Redwoods Company that helps us out with our PAL camp location, the Redwood Coast Montessori Vixens, because they raise a lot of money for us. And so this year, we wanted to make sure that the city of Eureka got a special recognition award for all of your support for the Discovery Museum and the perilous plunge, created by Ken Pinkerton. So, I don't know who the lucky person is to keep this, but we wanted to just take some time to thank you for everything that you do for the kids and the families of our community.
Thank you so much. We appreciate what you do for our kids in the community as well, it's amazing. It is awesome. Great job, Ken. Okay, and next we have a proclamation for Two-Spirit Day of Appreciation and Celebration. Councilmember Fernandez will be reading that, and I believe that Tribal Chairman Hernandez and, I can't think of your title, Michelle Vassal are here to receive this proclamation? Tribal Administrator Vassal are here to receive this proclamation? If you want to come up, you can. And Councilmember Fernandez, do you have that proclamation?
I do.
Great.
Are you ready?
I am ready, we're all ready.
A city of Eureka proclamation in recognition of Two-Spirit Day of Appreciation and Celebration, March 19th, 2024. Whereas originating from indigenous communities of Turtle Island, the concept of two-spirit denotes a unique cultural identity that includes various sexual and gender expressions intersecting with the indigenous LGBTQ+ identities, and people who hold diverse culturally significant roles in their respective communities. And whereas the term "two-spirit" was first articulated at the Third Annual Intertribal Native American First Nations Gay and Lesbian Conference in Winnipeg in 1990 as an umbrella term and organizing tool to center the diversity of gender identities and sexual expressions within indigenous communities that have rich histories predating European colonization. And whereas Two-Spirit Day of Appreciation and Celebration is already recognized in communities across Canada, including the city of Vancouver, the province of British Columbia, and the city of Saskatoon, and by many indigenous, two-spirit, and non-indigenous community-based organizations across Canada, occurring annually on the spring equinox, symbolizing harmonious balance between length of day and night, and moving from a time of dormancy to a season of newness, growth, and light. And whereas, as a result of community activism, determined advocacy, resilience, and talent, two-spirit people continue to reclaim and tear down systemic barriers set up to exclude them and serve as community, cultural, and educational leaders. And whereas, there are nine federally recognized tribal nations along with a large community of indigenous people from around the nation and around the world, within Humboldt County, including those who recognize two-spirit people within their cultures and languages, such as the Wiat tribe's term in Salatluck of Gomel, which means "both together." And whereas, the city of Eureka celebrates the beauty and resilience of two-spirit people today and throughout history, recognizing the two-spirit people have a rich tradition of contributing myriad ways to the betterment of our society, often working at the forefront of social justice, activism, and human rights. And whereas, in Humboldt County, we believe in and reaffirm the inherent value of each and every resident of our county, including our two-spirit communities, individuals, and families without exception. Now, therefore I, Mario Fernandez, on behalf of Mayor Kim Bergel and the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim March 19th, 2024, as Two-Spirit Day of Appreciation and Celebration, and encourage all residents to learn about two-spirit traditions and communities today. Summon the courage to stand up and speak out to interrupt racism, sexism, homophobia, and transphobia when it occurs, and listen with patience and empathy to create an environment for learning and understanding each other regardless of what we look like, where we come from, or who we love.
Hot wet low. Thank you. Thank you, city of Eureka. The Wiat people welcome everyone into our community to engage in cultural activities, rediscover Wiat culture, investigate, participate, support, and encourage each other to be welcomed into our community with open mind and heart. We recognize that each of us has a role to play in advancing the tribe's mission, culture, and language revitalization, and the effects of colonialism in Native American communities resulted in both marginalization on the basis of race and ethnic identity, as well as gender and sexuality. European colonizers condemn same-sex relationships and gender variance and use these beliefs to further dehumanize indigenous people, attempts to destroy our use of our native tongues Salatluck, further the colonizers' agenda as our native language embodies our worldview. Unlike English, Salatluck is inherently gender-neutral and uses inclusive pronouns, quiloo, which is he, she, or any third person, and who, his, her, or any third person possessive. Two-spirit refers to a person who identifies as both a masculine and feminine spirit and is used by some indigenous peoples to describe their sexual, gender, or spiritual identity. In Salatluck, we use the term gomel, "both together," and it is used to express two-spirit people within the Wiat community. The Wiat community was a target of more than 150 years of genocide, colonial practices designed to destroy the Wiat people through destruction of the Wiat language, culture, way of life, dispossession of land, relocation of Wiat people. We recognize the imprint of colonialism persists in our community, and we are strong and resilient people working to wake up our culture. The Wiat tribe is committed to creating space for diversity engagement and intends to create, or to increase diverse representation and empower courageous engagement. For some of that, for some of us, that means summoning the courage to stand up and speak out to interrupt racism, sexism, homophobia, and transphobia when it occurs. For others, it means listening with patience and empathy to create an environment for learning and understanding each other regardless of who we look like, where we come from, or who we love. Collectively, we call ourselves simply Gwll, meaning "the people," and that term embodies all of us. Hu, thank you, city of Eureka, for recognizing this day, the spring equinox, as Two-Spirit Day of Celebration and Awareness.
We appreciate you. Thanks for being here. Okay, and now we're going to move on. Actually, before we move on, I just have a couple things from my mayor's reports. I've been off for a couple weeks, as you can see, I'm injured, but I'm so grateful to be here tonight. But I just wanted to let you know that this Saturday, from 10:00 to 11:30 at Ross Park, there's going to be a workday, and we're going to be doing, well, I'll be there, but we'll be, collectively, the collective we, we'll be raking chips and picking up trash and those kinds of things, just sprucing up the park. So we'd love to see you that Saturday, 10:00 to 11:30. I wanted to thank both council, well, I wanted to thank Councilmember Castellano for filling in for me, she did a great job, and also thank City Manager Slattery, who's filled in with me, for me on a couple of events that I couldn't make, so I really appreciate you both. And then, lastly, I just wanted to say that the lovely flowers that we have out front by the dais today are brought to us by Eureka High, their floral program, and they will be doing flowers for us through the end of the school year, so I just wanted to give them a shout-out. I really appreciate partnering with the high school, I think it's really important to engage with our youth whenever we can. So with that, I will turn it over to presentations, and we have a bike plan update from City Engineer Willer.
Good evening, Mayor and council, I'm very excited to be here to give you guys a brief update on our bike plan, and what we've been up to with that. There we go. Yeah, so tonight, just want to give you a brief update on the bike plan that we've been working on for the last number of months. Okay. All right, so, that we've been working on. I'll wait until we're ready, patiently. There we go, okay. Yeah, so here's a little overview of this brief update. Talk about why, why are we doing a bike plan? I'll catch you up on the process that we've been going through since April, and then, not since April, but of, since last year. And then what's coming in the next few months as we kind of are in the home stretch of finalizing the process. Why a bike plan? This is really driven by a desire from council to, you know, to, which started with this policy here, the complete and green streets policy, was enacted back in January of 2023. The purpose and intent talks about the city's commitment to creation of complete streets, green streets, and provide a comprehensive, connected, multimodal transportation network that contributes directly to safe health, safety, health, economic vitality, quality of life for all residents, especially the most vulnerable, those walking, biking, and rolling. And multimodal, that really gets at, you know, a network of not just vehicle roadways and ways, but also bicycles and pedestrians and all means of rolling, you know, have full, complete streets when it comes to transportation network. A plan of this nature really allows the city to take a moment to focus on this particular element of our transportation network. So focus in on bicycles, be able to dedicate staff time, dedicate resources to focusing on what is the, what is the big picture? And what do we want to look at, you know, step back and look at? What do we have now? What do we envision for the future of our network, our multimodal network? And then be able to work into the finer details of, you know, here's the general plan, talking about north-south routes, east-west routes, connections through difficult areas or across difficult corridors, like the 4th, 5th, and Broadway corridors. And then really start to talk about the details, what do we, what do we want our bike network to look like when it comes to the type of bike lane facilities, the level of separation we might want to have between vehicles and cyclists? The plan also provides documentation of the process, why I made decisions, and what were the outcomes of those decisions. Similar to a capital improvement plan, a bike plan allows to prioritize and implement network enhancement rather than one-off projects. So again, it really allows us to put together a game plan to how to move forward with the network. It also allows us to put together a solid community engagement element. A comprehensive plan like this, where we were able to get grant dollars to do a plan, allows us to hire a consultant team to put together an engagement plan and have that element be a part of the bike plan itself. That allows us to facilitate many community meetings in various formats to inform and gather feedback from citizens and groups. It also puts us in a position to be able to go after grant funding, to be able to fund these improvements that we come up with. It will allow us to look at and understand what the state and federal objectives are, and to be able to tailor our plan to address those so that we're in better position to be successful when we apply for grants. It also provides that level of planning for scoping and cost estimating that's needed to help complete grant applications. So, to catch you up on the process, the project's been going for a year now. We kicked off internally with our project team after we selected a consultant back in April of 2023. We've had a number of project task force meetings, a task work is a group of local experts or groups who are interested in the bicycle network, and they've helped us kind of guide the process. Those can be local agencies, it can be other groups as well. We've, as a team, we've also put out a couple of surveys to try to draw, to have certain questions answered, and try to understand what some thoughts of the community are on various aspects of the, of a bike network, a bike network. We've had a couple of virtual meetings, so, virtual meetings where we've met with the community and not, and brought forward results of the survey. We've talked about, you know, generally what is a, certain aspects of a bike plan look like. We've had a walk audit where we actually met and went out and looked at certain streets with our project task force and came up with ideas and, you know, got, you know, took in opinions and criticisms and all sorts of ideas through that process. We've engaged with the students of St. Bernard's in person with our team to try to draw their, the youth into the process and really understand what their concerns are moving forward with being able to have, you know, the youth, they're the next, they're the ones who don't, maybe don't have cars to drive around, and they really are maybe a big user of cycle, bicycles, so we wanted to make sure that they were engaged. We also did an in-person open house event, which was our most recent event, on March 7th. That was a well-attended event, and there was a lot of good dialogue. We were able to put out preliminary corridors and have people rank their thoughts on what the corridors. So that was a, that was a fun and a very well-attended event. So what's next? We have continued project task force meetings, which are coming up here in April. We'll, we'll complete our draft report and have the PTF, we'll take a look at that. We'll do our third in-person engagement event, where we'll go through a number of things, including the results of the virtual meetings, the survey, the open house, and the data that was gathered through that. And then we'll talk about outcomes and next steps, and how this is all, how, we're going to look at the methodology for scoring and look at the proposed corridors that are coming through the plan that are kind of rising to the top through the process as people vote and provide their opinions on them. We'll then go to the Transportation Safety Commission. After that, we'll incorporate any comments from the TSC into the final report. We'll have a virtual community meeting to present the outcome of the final report, and then come to council in August and present the report for adoption by council. And that's all I have for you tonight, thank you.
Thank you, City Engineer Willer. Do any of the council have questions? Councilmember Moulton?
When I saw, thank you for that report, it's always great to hear about different ways we can get around town and accommodate that safely. When I heard you were making this report, I was hoping we would see a map that shows all the different ways you can get around by bike. I was envisioning it being just the bike routes, but of course, bikes can safely travel on lots of roads. I was just wondering if this was a suitable topic for a Talk Eureka page? Seems like there's a lot of, it's kind of niche, but there's a lot of pieces coming together, and we're looking for public input.
I think we can definitely look into that. Suzanne is here, so I'm sure she's behind me nodding, nodding her head that she'd love to do that.
That would be a great idea when I have time to pull that off, thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, and I, you know, I attended the meeting, the recent public meeting, and I just want to thank you for all of the work you put into that, it was a great turnout, and, you know, there was such a wide spectrum of people there, you know, asking questions, and the group that, that, you know, has been doing some of the background work, they really took their time with people who had extra questions and things like that. One of the questions that came up is, I think sometimes when people hear bike plan, they kind of think they're like, well, what about the street plan or the road plan? And so just, I'm aware that this does not take the place of any other, like, road repair plan or anything like that, but I feel like sometimes that's confusing to the public. Could you just speak a little bit about how this is kind of simultaneous with other kinds of plans that are in the works?
Yeah, certainly. So, you know, from time to time, we see when we have guidance from council on items that, you know, that you would like staff to pursue, in this case, you know, we felt like going after a grant for a plan like this was something that was, that was needed and desired, so that pushed us towards applying for a grant, successfully obtaining a sustainable communities grant through Caltrans. So that is a little bit of, you know, I kind of think of that when we get grant dollars in like that, that's, you know, that's like cream on top of, you know, our regular coffee, I guess. And the regular coffee would be the, you know, our street repair that we have. So, you know, we have a systematic plan for putting our transportation roadway maintenance dollars into effect, you know, a list of streets. You're seeing some of the street work out currently now, with doing some paving on H and I Street recently, to finish up part of that, that portion of the work. We're getting ready to do some additional streets coming up this summer, and every year after that, we have a game plan of like, here's, here's the next, here's the next streets, the next priority streets, when it comes to our roadway network. So we feel like this isn't taking the place of anything, this is just in addition to all the things that we need to, you know, we need to take in consideration. And while we have a very robust roadway network, we don't have a very robust bicycle network, so that's something that, you know, by this plan, we're trying to develop that, and it may not all, it's not all going to roll out at once, it's going to be something that, you know, as, you know, the corridors get prioritized- It's going to be something that, you know, as, you know, the, the corridors get prioritized, that's funding becomes available, we'll be able to implement those prioritized projects as we're able to gather the funding to do so.
And the, the capital improvement plan would be the coffee and the bike plan would be the cream.
There you go.
Thank you. I'll think about that tomorrow morning when I'm having my.
All right. And because this is a presentation, there'll be no public comment taken on this item, but we are at public comment now. So this is a time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. So if you are here for public comment, if you want to line up on that side or line up on that side, or just come on up.
Just have a quick question. Is item two an agenda item?
Yes.
So you can talk about item two when it comes up?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so come on up. I saw him, yeah. Thank you.
What's on my mind is very diff-
Welcome.
Welcome to you all. It's an honor to be here before your council. My subject matter is so different from the agenda, but I was encouraged by a young woman. Go ahead, Carol, go up there anyway. And my concern, I've been working with homeless people for about a year and a half. I lost my oldest grandson to fentanyl and I watched him go downhill. I watched his life, the pain that he had. I think it's not easy in the times that we live for young people, young men and women. It's a very difficult time, you know, for them to just move forward in life, that the steps that were typical in the past, like I'm back from 50s and 60s and our country's changed so much and there's not really support for building a normal life or getting married or, you know, there's a lot of pain out there. And the, my, my grandson moved from going to college, dropping out, and then he, he worked for UPS, but he worked many hours and he finally quit. And because of a lot of disappointment and pain in his life, he turned to meth. And then he was up here the last months of his life and I think he just decided he'd rather live in his car after a while. And, and drugs is sort of a, a relief from pain, really a different pain of life and was for him and I think for many people that are on the street and that are homeless and have given up trying to find happiness or fulfillment, you know? And so anyway, I, I think there was fentanyl in the meth that he took and he died. And he identified with the homeless and I have the easy time identifying with them too. And I'm just sort of like a mom on the street and I, I try to just take care of needs and give them respect. And I think all of us are worthy of respect and dignity and them as much as people that are successful. And I, I make, is that my time up?
You have 30 more seconds.
What?
Keep going.
Keep going, okay. Because I haven't got to the meat of it yet. Okay. So anyway, I, I, you know, supply tents, tarps, clothing, food every Sunday, home-cooked meal and things. And so I've gotten to know them and a lot of, you know, young men to me between 20 and 40 and some young women. And they're very, other conditions are horrible.
Now your time is up. I'm sorry, Carol. But I just want to share my appreciation for your sharing and sorry for your loss and thank you for the work you do. You can always reach out to us. Our cards are downstairs. Be happy to talk to you.
Can I just tell you why?
No, I'm sorry.
Harassment.
We only have three minutes for each individual and we don't extend our time.
I, I, there was, it's a big topic.
It is a big topic and I hope that you do reach out to us. I would love to talk to you offline.
Okay. Thank you for that invitation.
Thank you so much for being here. Appreciate you. Hello, Judy, welcome.
Hello. For every credibility gap, there's a gullibility fill and I gave you a lot of fill. I believed you when you said Measure H was to maintain vital services, when you said it was for police, fire, parks, and services that would benefit seniors and persons facing homelessness. I read the ballot question in the marketing materials. I even argued in favor of it. It's the only sign that's ever been on my lawn about a political position. And in the background, not on the ballot is, can be used for matching grant funds and the Independent Citizens Oversight Committee, which may be the Financial Advisory Committee. It wasn't until I looked at the description of the Financial Advisory Committee that I realized exactly how much fill I gave you. Non-interference. The purpose duties and responsibilities of the committee shall not be construed to limit or interfere with the city manager's responsibilities to construct and recommend the annual budget to the city council, nor to control it upon adoption, nor to intercede between the city manager and the council on budget recommendations or other financially related matters, nor to restrict or limit the city managed budgetary relationship to departmental staff, nor to interfere or impede departmental operations, nor to interfere with the city manager's relationship with labor organizations or groups of city employees or individual employees. Here's what the city's website for Measure H still says. In recent community outreach and engagement, residents identified top priorities the city should maintain if Measure H is extended, including, among others, the top six are maintain 9/11 paramedic, police, fire, emergency response, and preparedness. Repair potholes and maintain safe roads. Support local businesses and jobs. Maintain youth and senior services. Support city and community health services. Continue homelessness prevention programs. It's exceedingly clear the intent of this measure was to maintain the city. It was not to take on the new, the new created road projects. The only references in the ordinance and resolution are to drivers and pedestrians. I've attached a copy of the screenshot from the 2023-24 Financial Advisory Committee meeting. It clearly shows $0 to police or fire and a small amount for road maintenance. In the conversation on Facebook and Nameless City Employee, I was told this does not include all of the Measure H money. How can there be accountability and an accurate audit trail if money is randomly diverted to the general fund? There was also an attempt to talk about Measure Q funds, which had subsequent, which had sunset years prior. There is no transparency or accountability. Measure H has become a slush fund. Provide the promised transparency and accountability with an independent citizens committee that is not hamstrung.
Thank you, Judy. Thanks for being here. Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to speak? Hi, welcome.
Hi, Jackie Macbeth, President of Eureka, California. I too, and it's on the bike thing, I went to the meeting. It's the first one I've gone to. And there was about 30 people there. That included everyone. Most of them were all associated with bikes. And you really, I, I don't know where you got some of the ideas to put some of these bike lanes, especially Del Norte and N Street. It's right by the high school. It goes down the hill. N Street is a dead-end street between Del Norte and Boom. There's woods there and I cannot figure out why anybody would even look at that. You're going to have to take out redwood trees to put a bike lane through there. The kids don't use it. They have bikes on J Street, which is the front of the school, and it's not maintained, I have to say. But I would really like you to look at that. I don't know who's in charge of it. And the other thing is, I was surprised that most of the council, the only one that was there was Leslie. Nobody else was, and this affects all of your wards. I was really surprised that you weren't there. There's a lady that lives on N Street. She has never been contacted and her house is right on the edge where this piece of bike lane is supposed to go through. None of them has seen anything on that. And I think you need to really, whoever's doing it, let the people know what's going on. It's, to me, if they do it, it's going to be a waste of money because nobody's going to be using it except a couple of walkers. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Is there anyone else in chambers that would like to comment? Sing? Oh, here we go. Hi, welcome.
Hi, I guess I'd just say Scott Bauer is my supervisor, but he was surprised to see me here, so he probably didn't see it on my calendar. I would just like to say, express some support for the bike plan. And I think my experience this week might be a good example of why building out bike infrastructure is really necessary in our city. I try to bike to work most days, but it's not always possible having to get up early and get home late for work. But at this weekend, my car broke down, so didn't have much of an option besides biking. And Eureka's actually a really great place to bike if you are willing to be a little aggressive and strategic in your direction. But yeah, I just want to say that, you know, the building out a bike infrastructure isn't just for people who want to choose to bike, like I try to choose to most, most days. It's also for people who need to. It's their only means of transportation. Maybe it's like me where your car is broken down or maybe you can't afford a car. So I just want to say, thank you for making a bike plan and trying to make the city more comfortable to everyone. Thanks.
Thank you. So I'm sorry, we can't have you comment again.
Bikes.
Nope. We already had public comment, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. It's just, I'm sorry. It's just each person gets one section of three minutes and you can comment on other items is generally how it goes.
It was a comment on another, I went to Europe and a lot of people use bikes there and it's, it's a good method of, of, of transportation. And if, if it came into our city, it, it's.
So I understand. Maybe you could reach out to me. I'm sorry, but during open public comment.
This is very, very hard that you, the restriction on communication, but.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to talk? Okay, looking up to Zoom, I see Matt.
Good evening, council. My name is Matt Simmons. I'm a resident of Eureka. I want to thank you all for initiating the bike plan, although I do want to share some concerns that I have with it. The current bike plan seems to be prioritizing class three bike routes. This is just where you paint a sharrow in the middle of the lane and just hope that bikes and cars can share the middle of the lane. That's really unsafe. There was a 13-year study of 12 different cities across the US that compared different kinds of bike infrastructure, you know, bike lanes where it's a painted side bike lane, bike lanes where you actually have a separate protected area to bike in, and then these sharrow class three bike lanes. And they found that, you know, class three bike lanes could actually decrease safety because bicyclists thought it was a safe place to bike, but then car drivers didn't appreciate that. And so wherever possible, I would really encourage you to prioritize separate bike lanes for people and not just trusting car drivers to, you know, watch out. I'll also say I bike around Eureka quite a lot. And when I do bike in the middle of the road, like you're supposed to on a road that doesn't have a bike lane, lots of people honk at me and threaten me. I think they would appreciate it too, if we had separate bike lanes for me to be in. So if safety concerns aren't enough to sway you, do it for the drivers who are slightly inconvenienced by bicyclists in the road. So yeah, I, I attended the meetings, I shared all this with the folks putting together the plan, but I wanted to reach out to you decision makers directly. Thank you for your time.
And I just want to clarify for the audience and everybody that's here that this is general public comment. This is, people are commenting on the presentation because there is no public comment on a presentation, but right now you can have three minutes to talk about whatever you want, but you get three minutes during general public comment. Each person gets three minutes and, so that's the way that it rolls out. So I appreciate that people are willing to adhere to the decorum and the rules that are, that are set forth. And carrying on, we have Shannon Townsend.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you for taking my call. It's so cool to call into a meeting. I don't want to take up the whole three minutes. I see you have a very, very busy agenda tonight. I'm just calling to talk about something that I feel very passionately about and it's what's happening in Gaza and Palestine. And recently, we were able to work with the city of Al Qaeda to adopt a ceasefire resolution. It was endorsed by leaders of the Jewish and Palestinian communities here, as well as Supervisor Mike Wilson. And so I am hoping that your council would be interested in considering that again. I know that this was brought up earlier and removed from the agenda. And I just wanted to say that at this time, we're like almost 170 days into this horrific thing happening. And I've been paralyzed and I know a lot of people in our community are very paralyzed by what is happening. And I just would appreciate, you know, I have a lot of respect for you all. I love this city and you are my immediate connection to rule and order. So I would really appreciate some type of acknowledgement about what is going on and what we as a community, a statement, what we want to, what we want to promote in the world, because it's falling apart and we can do as much as we want here locally, but we are affected by global issues. And this is a very big global issue and this is the global issue that's getting me out here and participating locally in politics. So I just hope that maybe in the future, there could be some conversations about bringing possibly a ceasefire resolution or maybe something else, maybe some type of city divestment opportunity where you look at your investments and what you are investing in. Are you investing in war and, you know, horrors or are you investing in good around the world? Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Althea?
All right. So I am going to comment on the bike plan. I am in support of the bike plan. When I was a kid, you know, both my parents had to work. My mom didn't always drive. My mom didn't always have a car. So my brothers and I walked to school. My older brothers both walked all the way from Fairfield Street to Eureka High, which is 1.2 miles on foot every day, no matter the weather. My middle brother actually walked all the way from Fairfield Street to Zane, which was two miles on foot every day, regardless of weather. And so I support the bike plan. I especially support, you know, bike infrastructure, safe bike infrastructure around schools so that people like my brothers and I, who lived half a block outside of the bus zone, the school bus zone, can safely ride their bikes to school instead of having to walk. And I know over the years, there's been a lot of discussion and problems with traffic and parking around Eureka High, especially to the point where they had to go to permit parking. Well, if more high school students are able to ride their bikes to school, you won't have to worry so much about parking around Eureka High. You won't have to worry so much about traffic around Eureka High. So I'm in support of it, you know, especially connecting the bike lanes on, on streets to, you know, bike trails in the wooded areas and stuff. the bike lanes on, on streets to, you know, bike trails in the wooded areas and stuff. And then the other reason I called in today, National Animal Control Appreciation Month is coming up in April. For the first time in a couple of years, the city of Eureka has full-time animal control officers. There's actually two, which I think this is the first time that's ever happened. So I want to make sure the city gives them some recognition and appreciation because I know the few times I've called them, they've been very responsive and it sounds like we have good animal control officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Althea. Do you see anybody else on Zoom, Shannon? Oh, Patty.
Just raised her hand.
Patty.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi.
Hi, welcome.
I just wanted, hi, I just want to touch base about the bike plan meeting as well. Myself and, I don't know, eight or nine other Take Back Eurekaers attended. And it was a good meeting, although I think you guys are all aware of our frustration of it being at the Jefferson Project because there was no video and no access to put it on Zoom or have, you know, more community involvement. That was a little frustrating. The other part of it was there was no question and answer opportunity for the group. Yeah, you know, you could talk once you were, you know, got up and you were doing your little voting with your dots, but for the group to hear each other, I think it's really important to expand that Q and A. Again, the meeting before, the one that was virtual, we weren't allowed to access the Q and A either. So there's two meetings without a true Q and A for the community. So I think that needs to be addressed. Another thing that I'd like you to address as a council is the attitudes of your Transportation Safety Committee. There were two members there that night, Mark and Phillip. I watched Phillip shaking his head as people did try to ask, ask questions in a very kind of negative fashion. I introduced myself to Mark. It was clear he wasn't real happy we were there or happy to meet me or shake my hand. And I think that's a problem because they're, they're to represent the entire city, all of us. And all of us are there, we're not against that bike plan. We're curious, we want to know, we want to be a part of it too. So that would be my request, talk to your commissioners about their attitudes. And the other thing that was brought up at a commission meeting was the, with all the streets and the bike lanes, people are starting to park on the sidewalks. And we've really got to work on that. Number one, it looks trashy. And number two, it's not safe. There's handicap people being blocked by cars on sidewalks. So I've talked to your chief. He can do something about it with your push. So I'd like you guys to, to do that too. I do look forward to future meetings. I hope they're in a facility that is a city facility that we can extend out to the community via Zoom and other means. So, thank you.
Thanks for being here, Patty. Anyone else? Do you see anyone else, Shannon?
I see no one else.
Okay. All right, with that then, we will close the public comment period. And we will move on to our public hearings. This is E1, the Tiersbeck Surplus Property and Right-of-Way. And we have Senior Planner Castellano presenting.
Okay, good evening, council members. Caitlin Castellano, Senior Planner. The project before you for your consideration tonight is the Tiersbeck Surplus Property and Right-of-Way Vacation and Local Coastal Program Amendment at 2000 Broadway and 936 West Hawthorne Street. I'm probably going to go kind of quickly because there's a lot of components, but hopefully not too quickly. Oh, I was going a little too fast. So here's a bird's eye view of the project site in the context of the city limits outline. Oh, here we go. Outlined in yellow, it is located in the western portion of the city and along the central portion of Broadway. Zooming in, you can see the project site is located at the northwest corner of Broadway and West Hawthorne Street. Del Norte Street is one street to the north and provides access to Humble Bay and the Waterfront Trail to the west. Directly to the north of the site is a motel and mini storage facility. And directly west are undeveloped industrial zoned parcels with mapped wetlands per the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service's National Wetland Inventory. To the east across Broadway, Highway 101, is a retail cannabis facility and auto repair shop. And to the south across West Hawthorne Street is a hotel under construction and a bowling alley. Humble Waste Management Authority's Waste Transfer Station is located southwest of the site across West Hawthorne Street. So here is a portion of the Assessor Parcels map showing all of the APNs involved in the project site. And here is the city-owned parcel and the applicant's own parcel. And together, they comprise the notch. Here are the other two parcels owned by the applicant, 2000 Broadway and 936 West Hawthorne Street. So here's a zoomed in aerial of the project site outlined in red where you can see 2000 Broadway is the eastern portion of the property and includes the notch. And 936 West Hawthorne Street is the western portion of the property. Here's a 2019 Google Street View looking west from Broadway at, excuse me, yeah, looking west at Broadway. And here is a street view of West Hawthorne Street. These, this is how the site looks today. I excellently stapled my. Sorry. Okay, so the first component of the project is the proposed surplus property and summary vacation actions associated with 2000 Broadway. The applicant is requesting that the city of Eureka surplus and convey the city-owned portion of the notch to the adjoining property owner of 2000 Broadway and vacate the alley easement over the entire notch. The notch was created in the distant past for a 20-foot wide by 130-foot long public alley, which was never developed. Future development and use of the notch will be combined with the larger surrounding 2000 Broadway parcel. California Government Code 65402 and City Policy 2.01 both require the disposition of surplus property be in conformity with the general plan. And city policy requires a report, which is included in the Planning Commission Report, including your packet, on whether the surplus property is needed for present or future city or public use and whether the size and shape of the surplus property is suitable for conforming development. And if it's not, the property can be recommended for disposal to the adjoining property owner. So the street vacation requirements are found in the Streets and Highways Code, Section 8300, which gives jurisdictions the authority to terminate a public right to use a street. And a street is defined to include a public right-of-way or easement, including an alley. The State Code Section and City Policy 4.02 describe the process for street vacations. And like the general plan conformity finding for the surplus property disposition, California Government Code Section 65402 also requires proposed street vacation be in conformity with the general plan. So there are two types of street vacations, a summary and a general vacation. Summary vacation is a shortened and more simple process. And the proposed alley easement vacation does qualify as a summary vacation because the alley easement has not been used and has also been impossible for over five years and no public money has been expended for its maintenance. So here's an April 2019 Google Street View looking west from Broadway at the notch, which is about 600, or I'm sorry, 100 feet from Broadway west. As you can see, let's see, okay. And the second component of this project is the proposed LCP Amendment on the 936 West Hawthorne Street. The entire property outlined in red has a split industrial and commercial land use zoning designations, which limits the property owner's ability to redevelop the two parcels together. Therefore, the applicant proposes the LCP, that's Local Coastal Program Amendment, to change the land use and zoning designations from General Industrial, GIMG, shone in gray, to Service Commercial, GSC, CS, in dark red in order to be consistent with 2000 Broadway. There is no specific project identified at this time, but the current intent is to redevelop the entire 3.18 acre property with new retail and service commercial uses that may complement the new hotel being built across the street and help further revitalize Broadway aesthetically. The Service Commercial Zoning District allows for a variety of retail stores, offices, service and amusement establishments, wholesale businesses and residences. The General Industrial Zoning District allows big, big box retail offices and a variety of light and heavy industrial uses such as general and heavy manufacturing, warehousing, garbage dumps, and no residences are allowed. It's important to note that uses permitted in the light industrial zoning district are allowed in the Service Commercial Zoning District with a commercial, with a conditional use permit. And lastly, the Service Commercial and the General Industrial Zoning Districts already have a similar development, have similar development standards as each have a maximum floor area ratio of 1.2. That's a far, but the maximum height in the Service Commercial Zone is 55 feet, while in the industrial zone is 35 feet. So to approve the LCP Amendment to change the land use and zoning designations, the land use map, I'm sorry, the land use plan map or the LUP map, also known as the Coastal General Plan Land Use Map, must be amended and the proposed land use map amendment must conform with the Coastal Act. The Implementation Plan Map or IP Map, also known as the Coastal Zoning Code Map, must also be amended and the proposed zoning map amendment must be consistent with and adequate to carry out the certified policies of the city's land use plan, the 11 objectives of the Coastal Zoning Code and four additional requirements in the zoning code when changing to a commercial district. The required findings and analysis for the surplus property, the right-of-way vacation, the LCP Amendment are all included in the Planning Commission Staff Report in Attachment 5, Pages 7 through 17. So what does this all do? The surplus property and right-of-way vacation will resolve a longstanding property title issue on 2000 Broadway and provide the owner certainty that they can redevelop and/or sell the parcel. And as previously mentioned, the LCP Amendment will allow the entire property to be redeveloped together with new commercial uses. An initial study mitigated negative declaration pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act was prepared for the entire project and is before council tonight for consideration and adoption. Because no specific redevelopment project is contemplated, the environmental document only considers the impacts of future redevelopment to the extent possible. And future subsequent environmental review will be required for project-specific impacts not contemplated by the environmental document. So that, this is kind of a repeat. So future permitting of the entire site will require a coastal development permit, which does trigger additional environmental review. And the site is on the geotracker, so we can't, development can't use an exemption. So we'll definitely be able to get another bite at the apple to address project-specific impacts. So a sequence of events, almost done. Last August in 2023, the city council approved the applicant's general plan petition to apply for the LCP Amendment to change the land use and zoning designations because they found the amendment could have the potential to serve the public interest. On February 14th of this year, the Planning Commission at their regular meeting considered the SEQA environmental document and recommended the city council approve the entire project. I want to point out that we did not receive any comments on the SEQA document during the 30-day review or at the public hearing at the Planning Commission or receive any comments generally, generally on the, on the project. Here we are at the first of two city council meetings where the city council can hold a public hearing on the project, can adopt the SEQA environmental document, declare the city property surplus and vacate the alley easement over the notch, adopt the land use plan map amendment and introduce an ordinance to change the zoning map. Then there will be a second city council meeting to adopt the ordinance. And it, there will also be a resolution directing staff to transmit the LCP Amendment application to the Coastal Commission for certification. So after, if that all happens, the city, city staff will then submit that resolution to transmit the, and the application of the Coastal Commission, who will have 90 days to go to hearing. Or they can grant, or they can request a one-year extension for good cause. Lastly, the surplus of the city-owned property must follow the surplus land act requirement. So after tonight's meeting, if it is approved, city staff will provide a 60-day notice to resource agencies that the surplus, surplus parcel is available as required for properties within the coastal zone. And if no response is received, the city can dispose of the property to the adjoining property owner, which is the applicant. If a response is received, then we will return to council with negotiation results. So as I shared on the previous slide, for the sequence of events, the recommendation tonight involves receiving the Planning Commission Report, holding a public hearing and acting on the SEQA environmental document, acting on the surplus property and alley easement vacation, acting on the LUP map amendment and first reading of the IP map amendment. We won't read all this. And here's a suggested motion, but I will stop screen sharing for the public hearing. Thank you.
That was excellent. Thank you so much. Okay, do we have any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll open this up, we'll open up the public hearing. And if anyone from the public would like to speak on this item, please come forward. Okay, and it looks like seeing no one? We have one on Zoom. Althea.
Yep, I just wanted to say I'm in support of this. I've been watching the Extended Stay Hotel being built on the corner and seeing a lot of people as they're walking by be like, oh, hey, what is that? You know, people are excited about the redevelopment on the other corner. The only thing that people are a little dismayed by is that the redevelopment on the other corner is a hotel and not, you know, permanent housing for people. So I think if there's any way to incentivize residential development on that corner, on this, the subject property, you know, whether that's commercial on the ground floor and apartments above, I think people would really love that. That's all.
Thank you, Althea. Okay, so seeing no one from the audience, we'll bring this back to council for a motion and discussion. So I do want to say, my understanding is that we are going to, we can vote on this all together. We can, instead of reading all the resolutions, it can just be staff recommendation. And then we will need to read the full ordinance before we vote, if that makes sense. So, does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns, motions? Councilmember Molten.
Actually, I just wanted to commend you. I just wanted to commend you on synthesizing hundreds and hundreds of pages into a concise and informative report. What a ridiculous situation that we are in and to have to go through all this to basically fix it. I very happily move staff recommendation and read that after. Okay.
The ordinance recommendation section.
I'm sorry, do you have the motion?
I, I think we need.
Okay, I move the city couns- can I go? Okay. I move the city council of the city of Eureka adopt resolutions, and then the rest of it. A, adopting a mitigated negative declaration and mitigated monitoring and reporting program for the entire project, no comments received. B, declaring a city-owned 20-foot by 30-foot, 600-square-foot parcel known as APN 003-182-013. You need to say something.
You don't have to read all of them. You just say staff recommendation on the resolutions and then read.
In the bottom one.
I move the city council waive reading by title.
Thank you, but it was, I was having so much fun.
Go ahead, knock yourself out.
I move the city council waive reading and read by title only and introduce Bill Number 1034-CS, an ordinance of the city council amending the Implementation Plan Map of the Certified Local Coastal Program to change the zoning designation on 936 West Hawthorne Street, APN 003-182-010, from General Industrial to Service Commercial.
Second.
Well, thank you.
We have a motion in the second. And we have one more comment, Councilmember Castellano?
Just quickly, you know, I just, I do appreciate staff spending so much time on this. You know, and the ongoing commitment to, you know, really support the development of cohesive, cohesive plans around properties and I look forward to seeing what, what happens next with it.
So with that, if we.
Councilmember Fernandez? You're on mute.
Aye. It wouldn't let me unmute, sorry.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche absent, unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Okay, moving on to.
That would be three yes votes, councilmember Contreras Deloche absent, four yes votes, councilmember Contreras Deloche absent, motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on to consent calendar, all matters listed under the category, this category are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. Pursuant to city council resolution 2011-22, if a member of the public would like an item of the consent calendar pulled and discussed separately, the request shall be made to a council member prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read, there will be no separate discussion of these items. And no one has spoken to me about pulling anything. So then we can, can we have a motion?
Motion to approve consent calendar.
Second. Great, please vote.
Aye.
Four yes votes, councilmember Contreras Deloche absent, motion carries.
Thank you. So legislative action correspondence, is there any? Not today? Not today, great. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions, H1 Memorandum of Understanding Eureka Police Officers Association and City of Eureka, and we have Director Folger with us today.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to present to you today the MOU that was reached, the memorandum of understanding that was reached between the Eureka Police Officers Association and the City of Eureka. This is, I'm just going to go through it real quickly and just in case there's any questions afterwards, I'm here for that. But this resolution is authorizing the mayor to execute this memorandum of understanding with the City of Eureka and the Eureka Police Officers Association effective July 1st of this year through June 30th of 2027. So the term is three years. This includes an increase in salaries, longevity, a change in the retirement plan, an increase to the professional certification compensation plan, uniform allowance, and adopting other ancillary benefits and some administrative changes, as well as incorporating previously decreed-upon side letters that changed some aspects of the previous MOU. So again, there's a lot of details in this, it's a rather lengthy document. I know that you are all aware of what's happened as part of this negotiating process. Again, happy to answer any questions. But it's worth noting that this three-year agreement does represent a significant investment to the city's dedicated professional law enforcement and public safety personnel. It also represents yet another example of the strong partnership that does exist between the city and its POA. This was an example of good faith bargaining. We were able to resolve this rather quickly, amicably, and we just really appreciate the partnership we have with that unit. And so, and it's also really important to point out that this rather significant contract, this deal, provides a lot of stability moving forward for the next three years. Some much-needed cost of living adjustment increases and other benefits for our public safety union that they can look forward to over that time. And all of that is made possible by Measure H, and at least for the very, the most part, our ability to respond to the needs of that unit rests firmly in the tax revenues that are generated by Measure H and are dedicated to those public safety personnel. So that's my quick and short on this one for you all. And again, I'm here if you have any questions for me.
Do you have any questions for Director Folger? Councilmember Bauer?
I just want to thank you, Director Folger. You got it done pretty quick. I want to thank EPOA too. I think this is a fair, fair contract. I think it's something that they deserve, and you guys came through in record time and it was a great job. I think it's going to be good for our competitiveness in this tight labor market. So just thank you for, for what you've done on this contract.
Absolutely, and thank all of you up there who had a major hand in getting this done as well. So please thank you all very much as well.
Okay, so thanks. And if there's nothing further from council, oh, councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you, mayor. Similar to what Scott said, thank you for making this happen as rapidly as you had. I, I am curious though, and this is a very broad question, so forgive me, when, when you take into consideration that EPOA has approved of it on their end, we're looking at that tonight, how does it compare to the other municipalities, the other departments in the, in the region?
As councilmember Bauer pointed out, we view this as a very competitive package in terms of wages and benefit adjustments that make us on par and, and very competitive within our local labor market. Again, this is a significant investment, that is a very broad question, but it is part of what we all discussed in going into it. And really, what this is, is it's addressing the needs brought forward by the POA. This is based on the requests that they had and the prioritization of their needs and doing the very best that we could to address them in a meaningful way to resolve some of the, the challenges that we have in, in staffing and recruitment, retention. These are things that are occurring everywhere across industries, but in particular law enforcement. So I guess to answer your, that question with a rather broad answer, we do see this as, as a, a significant step in the right direction in addressing the many challenges that we have. And I, I don't think that it would have been agreed to by this, by the, this union and the partnerships that we have with them unless they felt in some measure that, that is the case for them as well. And I can speak to that for certain, and at least in the discussions that we had through this process, that that, that was the case. So, and again, we, we appreciate them very much as part of this process, so.
Right, and I think you, I think you hit it right there where it, it's not going to solve all the exacerbating issues around recruitment and retention, but it does help mitigate those. And so that's, that's kind of what I was asking, if it's, if it's going to help with that. And then, you know, there was a comment earlier about how Measure H hasn't been used for public safety up to, at, at any point. I wanted to ask, you know, since we're having this discussion now, if we are using Measure H funds with the economics for this memorandum of understanding?
The answer to that is absolutely. Measure H, as you know, is largely enacted as a general tax because it is intended to support public safety. That encompasses many things, but of course, at the core of that is our, our POA, our police department, and the services that they provide that are very vital to public safety in our community. And so, yes, this, without Measure H, the sort of sustainability that we've seen over the last three-year term of our contract that were, that comes up to term in July of this year, and the current one that we just agreed to that will replace it, would not have been possible without the funds generated by, by that tax measure. And they are being applied directly to not just these agreed-to MOUs, but other services that are infused into those departments that provide those vital services. This is just one piece, it's a rather big piece of that puzzle. But this is sustaining those, those services. And certainly, we see this as a step forward in, in our recruitment and retention. We, we very much hope so. That is really what we're looking forward to at achieving. Time will of course tell, but that, it was with that intent as well that we reached this deal.
And to get more to the point of what that public commenter was speaking about, the, the slide that was referenced as a part of that public comment was the amount of money above and beyond the 0.5%, well, the half-cent sales tax that we had. So it was the three-quarter cent sales tax and describing what that portion of Measure H was going to, while there was still a significant amount of money, because as the public commenter said, Measure Q passed and sunsetted, and that was replaced with Measure H. And so the funding that was referenced in that slide is only a portion of that money. And there's always been money going to all of those things, both quality of life things that was referenced in there, which would include the trail, as well as public safety, roads. As you guys know, we passed a policy both for streets infrastructure and non-streets infrastructure. That sets aside at least $2 million for streets, and I believe it's $750,000 or somewhere in that area for non-streets infrastructure. All of that is a part of Measure H.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've heard questions. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this item? Do you see anybody on Zoom? I see a phone number.
Phone number ending in 1816. Would you like to comment, 1816? Oh, there they go.
That's the third time I tried, so I'm sorry. All right, yeah, so anyways, this might not be, well, actually it is related to the police budget. You're talking about, you know, having, you know, trouble coming up with money for retention and recruitment. And I was just reminded of the fact that when the chief came back after those Big Brother polls had been up for a year, he, his report said that those six polls at a cost of over $120,000 had managed to assist in the arrest of one misdemeanor suspect, a person who was of course either booked or released or cited and released. So obviously, you can probably reduce crime more with a clown on a bicycle riding around and admonishing homeless people not to do bad things than, than what those, those polls actually produced. So why not just take and, put that money back in the police budget? You know, put it towards retention and recruitment. Because obviously, as we all expected, those polls are a huge tremendous waste of our money. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parr. Always nice to hear from you. Okay, do you see anybody else?
I see no one else.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to council for comments and a motion. Councilmember Castellano?
I move to adopt a resolution of the city council authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding between the City of Eureka and the Eureka Police Officers Association effective through June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Great. And so I do have a comment on this. I just want to share my appreciation for Director Folger and the EPOA. You know, things like this don't happen regularly. I've been in a lot of negotiations that have gone really south, and so, really south. So I just want to appreciate that, you know, you were able to listen and make this happen in a way that supports both sides and that our police officers are getting the appreciation, the respect, and those things that they well deserve because they, they are a huge part of our community and they do a lot for all of us. So I just want to say thank you for that. And with that, if there's no more comments, please vote.
Four yes votes, councilmember Contreras Deloche absent, motion carries.
Thank you. And then moving on to H2, bill number 1035, Open Space Parks and Recreation Commission with Assistant City Manager Powell.
Yes, mayor and council, before you deny it, is an ordinance that slightly modifies the Open Space Parks and Recreation Commission from its current configuration of nine members to where the request is to have seven members right now. The language is modified to be the same as most of our boards and commissions, which gives council the ability to have five to seven members, depending on interest in the board, the actions that the boards need to take. This particular commission had been nine members. We had, I think actually, four members who had served nearly 40 years on the OSPR. And we just had two of those member, we, we lost two of them a couple of years ago and then, and replaced those members. The, the last two members retired this, at the end of 2023. And so at this time, we'd like to, our staff, community services staff, really would like to make the board a little more manageable at seven members, which is the same configuration as the Transportation Safety Commission, and not replace those vacated board positions, but reconfigure the board at seven members. And that's what this ordinance does. And tonight is an introduction of that ordinance.
Do we have any questions for Assistant City Manager Powell? Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you. And just to clarify, when you say to make it more manageable, that getting nine people together is hard?
That's exactly it.
Okay, so we have seven people, we're more likely to actually have meetings and more likely to actually do things and make decisions and move forward.
Correct. They have had to cancel because if you have a nine-member board, in order, the quorum for a nine-member board is five members. And since we're down two, we haven't been able to get a quorum together for this particular commission for the last two months. So that is exactly the issue.
What a great opportunity to invite members of the public to join boards and commissions, which are, you know, amount to a handful of days a year, but these are the folks that are making decisions.
Similar vein as, as councilmember Moulton. So if we've had difficulty getting five to meet, four is an improvement. If we were to say a committee of five, would that simplify it? Would that make it easier? Or are we saying seven because of some other reason? I'm not yet aware.
At this point, we do have seven serving members of the board, and we wouldn't want to ask two to leave. So if we do find that it becomes difficult to replace members as their terms expire, then we would come back to council, but not through an ordinance. In an ordinance, you know, to change the ordinance, it requires two readings. We would be, because the ordinance says you have the ability to appoint five or seven, we would just be able to come back once and request that you reduce the board down to five members.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no further questions from council, we'll open this item up to the public. Is there anyone here who'd like to comment on this item? And it looks like we've got a phone number?
Phone number ending in 7936.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, yes. While you're here, I would like to please ask that you add in the Oxford comma to the name of the commission because Open Space, comma, Parks and Recreation is annoying to me. That's all, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Noted.
All right, seeing, do you see anyone else on?
I see no one else.
Okay. Well, seeing no one else, we'll bring it back to council for a motion, vote, or comments. Councilmember Bauer?
I'll make a motion to waive full reading, read by title only, and introduce bill number 1035-CS, an ordinance of the city, of, of the city council amending Title III, Chapter 33, Boards, Commissions, and Committees, Section 33.045, Open Space, Parks, and Recreation Commission.
I'll second. Motion in a second. Any comments?
Could we, could we add that Oxford comma?
Yes, it will be added when it comes back before you at the next meeting for adoption.
Great, thank you. Okay, please vote.
Aye.
Four yes votes, councilmember Contreras Deloche absent, motion carries.
All right, moving us up to reports and action items, planning commission. All right, moving us up to reports and action items. Planning Commission Vacation Rental Report, and this is with Development Services Director, is here to introduce the Planning Commission Subcommittee. Takes me a minute there.
Good evening, council. I'm just gonna pull up the Planning Commission's presentation. Our Planning Commission has a Vacation Rental Subcommittee, Commissioner Kraft and Commissioner Lazar are on it. Commissioner Kraft is the chair. He's presenting tonight. Before he starts, I just wanted to really thank our Planning Commissioners for all the free volunteer work they do for the city. All right, chair.
And then you can press forward, or you can ask me to.
All right, I'm gonna give this two tries. I'm Michael Kraft. I am a big fan of the Oxford comma and serve on the Eureka Planning Commission and have done so for about two years. I was tapped to come to you to talk with you for a few minutes tonight on vacation rentals. And this topic has been before you because staff has a compliance drive going, but we want to take a somewhat different look at it. All right, so some background. The notch, the Tersbeck thing, that's what we do on the Planning Commission. We dive into pretty technical stuff, applying code that you all have passed or your predecessors have passed. And it's been pretty low drama for my time on the commission. The one thing that I will say is different from, about that has been vacation rentals. And, you know, we've had the Jacobs property, we've had cannabis dispensaries, we've had parking lot swaps. None of those have been particularly emotional at the level of the Planning Commission. But often, vacation rentals are. And I think it's important to bring it to you, not because it's a pain point for us, but because it's a pain point, it's a disharmony in neighborhoods. So that's part of the background. As Director Kenyon said, Chairman Meyer appointed Commissioner Lazar and I to study it. Director Kenyon was very much involved as well as we went through this. I want to share a little bit of background and statistics. We've got some recommended steps going forward for you. And to kind of keep your eyes on the prize, the sort of primary issues here are housing affordability, neighborhood harmony, as I said, kind of the overall percentage of vacation rentals as a part of our rental properties, and density. And it's a good news, bad news situation. This is not something that is terrible, you know? These provide choice for visitors to our community. They provide transit occupancy taxes, but they also arguably affect housing affordability and have other downsides that I think should be managed. So I'm gonna here concentrate on the two little vignettes on the left. So Renter is a property management firm that has about 5% of Humboldt's overall rental properties. They're concentrated in the Humboldt Bay Area, so I think this is a decent snapshot. It's not going to be exact for the overall situation in Eureka. But if, if you want to rent a three-bedroom house with two baths, you're looking at a median price of $2,200 a month. If you're in a 2-1 apartment situation, more like $1,325 a month. And the market is tight. As of December, 99% rented out. So if you're looking, it's, it's a bit of a scrum out there. So you're probably aware that the traditional yardstick is that affordability is if you're spending a third or less of your income on housing. And in Eureka, this is, by the way, some of these statistics are updated from what's in the paper, which we wrote kind of summer, fall of last year. So median income's a little under $52,000 per the Census Quick Facts now. So for that 2-1 unit, you'd need to be making 47 for that to be considered affordable. For the 3-2 unit, $79,000. And so that also shows a pretty tight market relative to what folks can afford. Here's a quick map that is based on the host compliance data that Director Millar is working from. And in general, you can see the little scraps of yellow. Those are what we believe to be unpermitted vacation rentals. So they're active on some VBRO site or something like that, but are not enrolled with the city. They're probably not paying their taxes. The green ones are permitted. And it's not, you know, there's a lot of gray space there in the city limits. It's not like the density is super high at this point. If you drilled in, you would see at the east end of Del Norte, it, there's a, something of a concentration. I walked in neighborhood where a vacation rental application was happening, and somebody said, yeah, that's one, and that's one, and I don't think they know it, but that's one. So in some neighborhoods, there may be starting to be some density or some, but overall, not a, not a really big issue. So this is a chart that shows kind of what it actually is and what it feels like. So on the left of all the rental housing stock in Eureka, about 2.5% is used as vacation rentals. But if you're looking, if you're one of those people who are out there trying to find a place, and you're just paying attention to what's being advertised, your experience tracks with the right there. The long-term rentals are less than 30% of what's being advertised, with the short-term rentals being advertised a lot more. That's not a great stat. Statistically, I took statistics in graduate school, the chart on the right isn't statistically worth all that much. But if you're looking for housing, that's, that's what you're seeing. That's what you're feeling. So there's a lot to think about. And this is in the paper, but, you know, permitting pass might be different whether there's an occupant onsite or not. They might be different for historical housing. You know, we found ourselves kind of painting nice little ladies who are working in their gardens and have a four-bedroom Victorian and rent out one suite. And this allows them to keep that property versus some corporate schmuck with six places. They don't live onsite. They're just taking stuff away, you know? Stereotyping, obviously, but it is illustrative of actual stuff. There are people who are onsite, there are people who aren't. There are better neighbors, there are worse neighbors. One thing, in a lot of this, we're saying, this is worth a look. And we may have individual opinions. One place where the Planning Commission is together is we think it does not make sense the way it's done currently, where when we give a permit for this, it runs with the land. So if Mayor Burgele owns a place, she's a responsible person, for whatever reason, she sells it to me, I get the benefit of the fact that that's a permitted vacation rental, and I might be nearly as responsible. And so, you know, something that would be more of a renewable license would make more sense to us. It's hard to affect local cause and effect, but there is some pretty solid academic research that as percentages of vacation rentals increase in communities, rental rates increase, supply and demand, you know, it makes sense. And then coming back to the Planning Commission's role, you know, we look to implement policy that you all pass. We don't love the policy that we're implementing right now. And we have been, I found myself voting both ways. We have one commissioner who says, I really don't want to vote yes on another vacation rental application until we've got a more concrete guidance from the council, or at least until we know that the guidance we have is what they want us to be applying. So we have, we do have an ask for you. But before I get there, I want to add one more thank you, because Assistant Planner Ponce would not allow me to show you an ugly slide deck. So the fact that this is at all attractive is thanks to her. She cajoled me, but she also did some of the work, a lot of the work herself. Okay, so our ask of you, if you agree with us, by the way, this is a report tonight. You're not taking action, obviously. But if you agree with us that this is an issue, that it should be a priority, then we're asking that you direct staff to finish up the compliance drive that they've been working on for some months, give a little bit of time for planning staff to look at, you know, other rubrics out there, other things, consider what we've brought, do some actual studying. And then really what we're trying to get to is code that is implemented in 2025 to be in a better, more rational place then. So that's, that's what I have. Commissioner Lazar, obviously, Director Kenyon are both here. If you have questions, I may be able to answer them, or they may. So.
Thank you. Do we have any, Councilmember Moulton? We have lots of questions, I'm sure.
Yeah, thank you for that presentation. I think that's, you're right, this is something that people respond really emotionally to, you know, especially when it comes to such a really tight housing market. But having some real data and some perspective on it is incredibly useful. My question is actually, I'm just, I'm just curious, you were showing a map of potentially non-compliant rentals, and there was a very large yellow square on Seventh Street. What, what is that?
So Attorney Luna really preferred us not to identify properties.
Okay. Well, don't let, don't let me ask you to run afoul of the city attorney.
But also to give you my honest answer is I don't know.
Okay.
It's, it's a mistake. It's the Eureka Inn. And so when we do, you know, run the host compliance report, it pulls up everybody who advertises on things like Airbnb. So some of those are mistakes.
I see. So that map is not like gospel.
100% accurate, no.
There's a little, okay. But it's giving us an impression.
It's giving you an impression. That's the point of it, is to just show the general distribution of it throughout the city. Don't take it.
Thank you. I was looking at the map. I was like, is that the Eureka Inn? I'm pretty sure they pay TOD.
It also showed all of Woodley Island because there is, there is, we do have a boat or two out there that gets rented.
Okay.
At the harbor.
I kind of feel about that map, like when I was a kid, the white, what was it? Disney. There were these nature things that were Disney, and they said, this may not exactly be factual, but it illustrates facts. And, you know, these statistics are pretty squirrely. Director Millar has done really yeoman-like work to try to run down some of what doesn't, doesn't fit. And you will attach to our transmission to you were letters from Ms. Crichton and Mr. Taylor, and they pulled at different times from different sources. And if anything, their statistics make the argument more strongly than ours.
Just about the map that if you were wondering, like, to count the jelly.
This is Commissioner Lazar.
Yeah, Steve Lazar. I serve on the commission with Commissioner Kraft. The jelly beans in the jar, looking at that map, it's basically 90 to about 100 parcels. Those are, and the big, when it's big, it's just because the parcel's big. We just picked the parcel to identify it. And it's roughly 62 of the green ones and 36 of the yellow ones. So you can kind of get an idea of the ratio. And it's not 100% accurate, but it's based on the data that we had. And it's based on data from July of, of last year. So it will be different at this time.
Great to have a GIS expert working on this, too.
Thank you. Thank you both for all of the time you put into this. It's much appreciated. Let's see, I didn't notice in the report any numbers on out-of-town owners. Was that looked at at all in this particular?
We did not look at that. The host compliance data may have some, but I'm not, I'm not aware of that. There, there is a requirement for an emergency contact within 50 miles for a place that does not have an onsite operator. But I don't know about in ownership, in town ownership or out of town. But obviously, those out-of-town people who own the sixth thing, they're on, they're not the nice lady with the yard.
Yeah, thank you. And Director Kenyon, do you know if that's something that could be possible to find out for future reports? Is just a percentage of?
Yep, we could totally do that.
Okay, super. And then, I know this has come before council before, and I, do we get the same percentage TOD on short-term rentals as we do on hotels?
Yes.
Okay. And then, can you remind me our current permit fee for short-term rentals?
Oh, man.
Sorry. It's okay, we can, it can come back. I just was.
Don't quote me, but it's 800 bucks, isn't it?
That's if you need the minor use permit.
Oh, sorry.
Because it's, there's all different stuff. The $50 business license, the, yeah, I'll bring that back for you.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, I wasn't trying to like play, give you a quiz or something. And then, let's see. We got some public comment that was, you know, cited some different numbers of short-term rentals. Do you, could, I don't know if, you know, there's some letters that were included in the agenda pack. Could you speak a little bit to maybe the, the source of those, that difference in number? Sorry, any, yeah, anyone, I guess.
Yeah, I thought about that. I think part of it might be that, this is just a guess, that site that they're pulling from might be looking at the greater Eureka area versus city limits specifically. Also, it just had two categories, full unit and renting a room. And in looking through properties and how they're being used, it seems like a lot of them are more of, people are using a part of their house that has a door to the outside and converting it into a hotel suite with, you know, a little mini fridge and microwave. And it's not, it really is just a part of their house, but it's being called a separate unit on Airbnb because it has the door to the outside. And so you don't have to interact with the people in the house.
Gotcha. Okay, okay. And then are we only doing questions now, or?
Okay.
Super. Thank you so much.
I gotta thank you all, and whole commission, the Director Kenyon. This is a super heavy lift. I mean, when you look at 99%, you know, rentals are, they're gone in a second, right? Everybody, we need housing. And so, and then I look at the 2.5%, and I think, that's not a big deal, right? And, and we want people to make a living, you know? If it keeps them in their house to rent a room, that's great, you know? But do you, did you see anything in the data that shows that this is increasing? Like, is this becoming a bigger issue? I mean, I, you read about it across the United States, right? Vacation rentals, private equity, buying up, you know, rentals and taking, taking over the labor market, or the rental market. What do you guys, what do you see happening that we should be thinking about? I think of this especially when we set a limit. I hope we set a limit sometime on vacation rentals. Did you, did you see anything like that, trends?
I'll answer for myself, not for the commission. I am, I'm not seeing anything in Eureka that says there's a rush to the land office. If, if it were me designing a cap, and I, I tend to agree with you that I think there should be one myself, I would probably set it higher than the current amount, not cause a rush to Director Kenyon's office to slam a bunch of applications in and that kind of thing. I think we have an opportunity here to manage it before it comes, becomes a problem. It's, you know, the overall density and the overall percentage as opposed to that neighborhood piece kind of goal. I don't think the overall percentages are worrisome yet. But you don't want to turn into West Haven and Trinidad.
Yeah, exactly.
And I can add to that. I think Commissioner Kraft's personal opinion is accurate, based on the numbers that Director Millar has reported to me, because we've been tracking this for, I believe, two years now. It's fluctuated, but it hasn't shown any specific trend of going up or down. I mean, I think Arcade experiences this with their regulations. People will do this for, you know, certain times of the year, get frustrated with it, and end up turning it into a month of People will do this for, you know, certain times of the year, get frustrated with it and end up turning it into a month-a-month. And yet they still have the, the V R B, the short-term rental tag on it. So it's based on the numbers we're getting from the consultant, it hasn't increased any specific way, it's gone up and down.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you. Hi. On the, I forget which attachment it is, forgive me, but you, you lay out some, some ideas about moving forward, and I think that have been touched on. One of them is about permitting could be tailored to enable a local person living in their house an easier path in and out of area corporation. How might that be achieved without raising any sort of civil rights issues? Or equity issues?
It's a great question. And I don't know the legal answer, but I've seen enough models that it has been done.
You know, just as an example, the recently passed short-term rental regulations by the county differentiate between home share and, you know, full home rental. So it's not without precedent, it's certainly doable. And it just shows how the conversation about this is a lot more nuanced now. The city deserves a lot of credit for being one of the earliest jurisdictions to regulate it and provide a permitting pathway. But we are a lot further along, and given the, the issues that we see with the lack of housing and the lack of rental, it's time to kind of revisit whether we differentiate between different types and set different caps and considerations, given those, the, the consequences of those types of rentals. So I, I think it's certainly doable.
And then we've talked about caps a bit tonight. It says, you know, on the same page, a city code allows for, or existing code allows for a cap. But we currently don't have one, or we do, and again, something I'm unaware of.
We do not currently have a cap.
Okay, thank you.
And just to refresh council's memory, what is being recommended by the Planning Commission is what the intent of, it seems to be consistent with the direction that council has given us, which is basically, we have regulations in place for these properties to be permitted. We're getting a hold of what the numbers are, sending out letters to those who are non-compliant, getting them into compliance. And then once we get to that point where we have people in compliance, we have a hold of the numbers, then come back and discuss regulations.
Thank you for your time.
I see no one on Zoom.
Thank you. You know, I tend to agree with the recommendations that the Planning Commission Committee brought forward. In particular, and, you know, as I could be inferred in the question I asked earlier, I'm curious to understand, you know, the out-of-town owners. I am familiar with other communities that have put in restrictions in place in terms of folks who live onsite. That could be something to consider in terms of like a percentage of, you know, anyway, I would, I guess I'd like to see a menu of, of options. And I do think one of the things that was kind of striking was, you know, just how much people make off of vacation rentals, which is great, you know, that people are, you know, making income. And, right, at the same time, I think about the social cost and the cost of people not having access to housing. And, you know, even within the city, like we are investing funds to help, you know, as much as possible to help alleviate those restrictions in terms of, you know, offering programs to help people who, you know, can't afford to pay rent, or, you know, those kinds of things. And so, right, like, like though we might be making some income from the vacation rentals, are we also like losing, well, income, you know, like making financial resources? Are we also losing resources in terms of basically subsidizing the, the housing that's lost through those? And so just kind of a further assessment of that, I think would be interesting. And, and, you know, I do think that probably our license fees could be steeper or could be higher, just to recognize at the very least the, the costs that, that they have, or the impact that they have on the community. You know, and I do think it would be interesting to look at, you know, just kind of density of rentals and areas and that impact on the community. And that could be some way of looking at, and again, I know you're going to bring all this back, but, you know, looking at, you know, perhaps when a certain density threshold is reached, then people would, you know, have to live onsite or something like that, so that there would still be that presence of a real person in the community who's engaging with their neighbors, you know, for, for the benefit of conviviality and neighborliness. That's all.
Anyone else? Councilmember Bauer?
No, I think Councilmember Castellano kind of laid it out pretty good. I'm not sure about higher permit fees as much as permit fees that match staff time. You know, like whatever, whatever makes it, you know, we're, we're not subsidizing the permitting process. But I think this is great. I, I like the recommended steps timeline that you guys have come up with. And I like to see it moving along a little faster, obviously, I mean, we've worked on this a long time. And I hope people are out there, are, are coming into compliance. You know, the intent is to make it a legal, a legal structure, a legal, you know, it's a business, let's be honest, right? And it should be legitimate, and it should contribute to the community. So I'm happy to see us doing this, and I, I'll still be watching for those private equities trying to come in and buy up rentals, because it's happening. But, yeah, I look forward to, I mean, September is actually a pretty quick timeline to get this all kind of wrapped up. So look forward to seeing what you all come up with. And thanks again to the commission for working on kind of a painful issue. So much appreciated.
Do you feel like you have the direction you need?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you. I too want to appreciate the Planning Commission for all your dedication and work that you do outside of just the Planning Commission meeting. I know it's a lot, and I just, I'm grateful for that, thank you. Okay, so, moving on. It's seven fifty-eight, we're going to take a break, we'll see you in ten. Six, six. And we are gonna start with I too. The Jacobs Campus Town Hall debrief and next steps with Development Services Director Kenyon. Thank you.
Hi. Actually, our Assistant Planner is going to start, and then I'll, Penelope Ponse. And then I'll join in, just trying to share the screen, Derek. It's okay, I'll just share it for us, and then he'll, when he comes on, he'll share it for Zoom. It'll just be a little, okay. Okay, yes, right. I think we are ready to go. All right, so good evening, everyone, I'm Assistant Planner Ponse, and I'm here with Director Kenyon to debrief on the recent Jacobs site town hall and discuss the next steps. The Jacobs site is a former middle school located directly north of Allard Avenue and south of Alice Burney Elementary. The school was built in nineteen fifty-six and closed in eighty-two. The school facilities continued to be used until two thousand nine. After not being used for over a decade, the district had buildings demolished in two thousand twenty-one. Around that time, the school district began negotiations with other entities to sell the property, including the city.
No audio on Zoom.
Should I restart? Okay, cool. Okay, well, we just gave a brief background, nothing important. Well, I guess it is important, but nothing pertinent.
I, I can't start my video, but I'm here. Like, it's disallowed on my end.
We're allowing, there you go. Okay. Okay. So in December two thousand twenty-three, the school board ultimately made a decision to enter into an exchange agreement with A M G Communities Jacobs L L C. Per the exchange agreement, the southern eight-point-three acres of the Jacobs site are being sold to a developer. Funds from the site, funds from the sale will be used for the district's capital facility needs. The district plans to retain the upper five-point-eight acres and continue to use them as ballfields. The developer has, the developer and the district remain under contract for the land exchange, but the closing date has not been set. And the developer has not informed the city about their plans for a development. The future of the Jacobs site is of great interest because the city of Eureka is largely built out with relatively few sites of this size that provide realistic opportunities for new development. So in response to the district's decision to sell the eight-point-three acres of the Jacobs site to the developer and the resulting questions and concerns voiced by the community, Councilmember Moulton hosted a town hall meeting on January twenty-third. The town hall provided a forum for the community to learn about and discuss the current situation and the future of the Jacobs site, as well as provide staff with input on how the community would like to see the site developed. So we had over a hundred people attend the meeting. About sixty of them showed up in person in the council chambers, and forty participated on Zoom. Most of the attendees found out about the meeting from the local news, receiving postcards and flyers, or they heard it from the South Eureka Neighborhood Alliance. At the beginning of the meeting, we had polling questions that helped us gauge who was attending. We first asked, "Where do you live?" And the majority of the attendees lived right next door or within the neighborhood. We then asked people why they had come to the meeting, and the most popular response was concern, specifically about what's going to happen to the site, as well as how it's going to affect them. After the introduction surveys and the presentation from the South Eureka Neighborhood Alliance and city staff, we had a breakout session where we placed the audience in person and on Zoom in groups of ten and asked them to engage with their fellow group members and answer three prompt questions. Answers gathered from the session were inputted into a word cloud generator to help us determine the community's most common ideas and input. A word cloud generator makes words or phrases larger, depending how many times an idea is repeated. So the first question was, "What do you love about the neighborhood around Jacobs site and what is working?" Input gathered show that people love that the neighborhood is affordable. They love that they have good relationships with their neighbors and community. They love the walkability. They love that it's a safe and quiet place with young families. And of course, they love the ocean view. And I apologize that this is a little bit small. This is also on the Talk Eureka website, if you want to take a better look at it. The second question was, "What are your biggest concerns about the neighborhood? What could be better?" The community's biggest concern is traffic, specifically speeding vehicles. They also voiced concern that there needs to be better public transit, ADA accessibility, and sidewalks in the neighborhood. They're also worried about trash, safety, crime, overpopulation, and gentrification. The final question was, "Knowing the lower eight-point-three acres are being sold to a private developer, what is your dream or vision for the Jacobs site?" The most popular dream and vision for the site the attendees want is a place for the community, such as a recreation space, community gardens, or a community center. There's definitely a lot of desire among the many in the neighborhood for publicly accessible communal amenities, such as a swimming pool, bike paths, and dog parks. So to sum it up, there is a consensus among the community. Most of the neighbors are concerned about what will happen to the site and how it's going to affect them. There's also a strong consensus for transparency and public involvement in the planning and development process of the site. In contrast, we found that there is no consensus on the best way to use the site moving forward. Some community members expressed their disappointment that the district's negotiations with C H P were unsuccessful. Given that the district is selling to a private developer, there was a lot of discussion about what types of private development may be appropriate for the site. There are a lot of differing opinions on these topics. Many people wish the site can be used solely for free community amenities, such as a swimming pool, dog park, or a community center, which is not feasible as the property ownership transfers to a private developer. Housing is another big topic of discussion with mixed excitement and concern to build more housing. Top concerns about housing include density, building height, traffic and parking impacts, and the resulting effects on the neighborhood's character, safety, and property values. People also express a desire for low-density housing, affordable housing, mixed income, and owner-occupied housing. Various community members voice support for mixed use at the site in addition to housing, small commercial uses such as small shops, medical offices, neighborhood markets, coffee shops, and restaurants. We distributed an exit survey in person and on Zoom to analyze the audience, and about half the attendees took the time to fill it out. Overall, we received positive feedback. Mostly community members who attended appreciated that the city and Councilmember Moulton put on a meeting. People expressed that it was a great way to get more information and ask questions about what was happening. They also expressed that they appreciated the opportunity to provide input in the breakout groups and provide input verbally in person and in surveys. And now Director Kenyon will be presenting information on options and next steps. Okay, yeah, so can't say this enough, the city and the school district are separate entities. The city does not own the Jacobs site, we don't have site control. But we do have some influence over future use of the site through our zoning power. The city's zoning map assigns every property in the city to a zoning district, and the city's zoning code applies different development standards and allowed uses to each district. The Jacobs campus is currently zoned in designated public facilities, which limits the site to public and civic uses. As a result, any proposed private residential or commercial development at the Jacobs site will require a zoning and general plan map amendment to change the zoning and land use designations of the site. We often just refer to this as rezoning the site. Rezoning can be initiated by a property owner, city council, or by a ballot initiative, if approved by the voters. And there is a ballot initiative that qualified for the city's next general election that if passed would in part require the city to rezone the Jacobs site. So what zoning options are there for rezoning the site? State law recognizes that unused school sites represent a potentially major source of revenue for school districts and therefore require the city to approve of rezoning the unused school site to allow the site to be developed at least to the same extent as is permitted on adjacent property. The zoning adjacent to the Jacobs site is low-density residential, or R one, so that is an option for rezoning the site. There also are two other residential zoning districts in the city's code, residential medium and high. Another option is a mixed-use zoning district. And out of those mixed-use zoning districts in our code, neighborhood commercial would probably be the most appropriate. It allows limited-scale neighborhood-serving commercial uses in addition to residential uses. And as you can see on the map, there is R two zoning and neighborhood commercial zoning to the north of the site around Harris Street. In addition to our base zones, the city's code also has a few overlay zones that can be applied in addition to a base zone to add restrictions or additional allowances. So for example, neighborhood-serving retail is not allowed in any of the three residential base zones. But the city zoning code has this neighborhood market overlay that you can apply in addition to a base residential zone to allow limited neighborhood-serving uses where they normally wouldn't be allowed. We also have a special considerations overlay, which can be applied on top of any base zone to add site-specific standards. So whereas the neighborhood market overlay includes a set
So whereas the neighborhood market overlay includes a set of detailed standards about what types of businesses can be allowed and how they can operate in our code, the special considerations overlay doesn't have rules. You apply site-specific rules. You write those and apply those through an ordinance when you adopt the overlay for a specific property. So potential next steps. Option one, staff, I mean, city council could initiate general plan and zoning map amendments for the lower eight point three acres of the Jacob site. Under this option, staff recommends doing some additional background work before deciding how to rezone the site. This is optional. This is an optional step in the rezone process. First, given what we heard at the town hall about the desire for public input, staff would recommend, if you went down this route, additional public outreach. Also, hiring an expert to perform an economic feasibility analysis for the site to look at what potential mix of uses, density, and building types can be supported by the market. And hiring a graphic designer to explore different site layout configurations, testing the site's capacity. These graphics would also be useful in communicating to the public how the site could look and feel depending on what zoning and development standards are applied. Based on this research and outreach, the city would develop a vision for the site and propose a new land use designation and base zone. And to really implement a vision, another option would be, in addition to a base zone, developing a special considerations overlay ordinance tailored to the Jacob site with site-specific design and development standards. Staff anticipates that rezoning of the Jacob site will require environmental review under SEQA. And this is not a certain thing at this point, but we're anticipating it would likely be a mitigated negative declaration. And then finally, the amendment would require notice public hearings with the planning commission and city council, similar to that tourist spec amendment that was on earlier. The estimated cost of this option is around seventy-five thousand, thirty-five thousand of which would be for the SEQA environmental review. Rezoning would not affect use of the site by state agencies because they don't have to follow local zoning if, for some reason, it was acquired by a state agency in the future instead of a private developer. And the rezone could be done before the end of the year if we start right away. But if the initiative passes in November, the city would be required to rezone again to be consistent with the initiative. At that point, additional SEQA environmental review would not be required because ballot initiatives initiated by voters don't require SEQA. So now for option two. Second option would be for the city to develop and adopt a new mixed neighborhood overlay zone that would be similar to the neighborhood market zone in that it would have these pre-established standards that would be in our code that could be applied in the future to the Jacob site or to other sites in the city. For, the standards would be for integrating high-density, higher-density residential and some limited neighborhood-serving commercial uses into predominantly single-family neighborhoods. The standards would be focused on form, design, and layout of buildings and sites to ensure compatibility and scale with surrounding single-family homes. The overlay would include diagrams or other visuals to help communicate the community's vision for appropriate form and scale of development. At the town hall, we heard a lot of fear about higher-density development and a lot of questions about what different densities look and feel like. The answer is that twenty-two dwelling units per acre or a floor-area ratio of three can be looked, can look very different depending on what form that development takes. Our older neighborhoods actually have some great examples of how more housing and limited commercial can be blended well with a predominantly single-family neighborhood, sometimes quite literally by converting one existing large house into multiple units. So we would be attempting to recreate this gentle density using overlay regulations. The steps for this overlay option would be similar to the first rezoning option. We'd start with public outreach, graphic design to visually communicate different options. We'd develop overlay standards and visuals, and then there'd be notice public hearings before the planning commission and city council. Because the overlay just adds additional form-based standards to the code, we anticipate using a common sense SEQA exemption, which means the process for this option would be, we estimate, would be cheaper. It could also be completed in, by the end of the year, and it could be applied to the Jacob site in the future in addition to whatever base zone the Jacob site has. So regardless of whether the initiative passes or not, and it could be applied elsewhere in the city as well in the future. And then the third option is to do nothing at this time and wait for greater certainty regarding site ownership and/or the result of the ballot initiative, and/or wait for the school district or future owner to come forward and request their own land use and zoning map amendments. And if they initiate, if the property owner initiates the rezone, they pay for the process. So that's our report.
Thank you.
Oh, shoot, stop shit.
Do we have any questions for Development Service Director Kenyon? Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you very much for that synthesis. The town hall was productive, but like most conversations in Eureka, you ask three people for an opinion and you get five opinions. So I appreciate that y'all encapsulated that just as best you could. So a couple of questions here. The rezoning public process, you estimate would cost around seventy-five thousand dollars, breaking that down thirty-five for SEQA and about twelve thousand for, I don't know, the rest. If the, so say if we did the rezoning and then the ballot initiative passed and we would have to rezone it again. Okay, then, I'm sorry, you already said that SEQA, you wouldn't have to do, I'm just trying to figure out how much the, if we rezone it now and the initiative passed, what would it cost then to rezone it again after?
Yeah, at that point, there would be no point of doing any public outreach or background analysis because we couldn't change anything about how the initiative was zoning it or requiring us to zone it. So we would just basically be paying the cost of going to planning commission and then city council twice with newspaper and mailed noticing, which is about five thousand dollars.
Okay, and if we did nothing and then the ballot initiative passed and we had to rezone it, is that about what it would cost?
Yes.
Okay. In the second option, the zoning overlay for a mixed neighborhood overlay, what does that forty thousand cost, cover then?
Yeah, it's the outreach that we would do, and then the graphic design. We would get a lot of visuals to communicate what forms would be appropriate in a single-family neighborhood. That would be like, single-family scaled, that would allow for multiple units or commercial. And then developing that ordinance, what those standards, those design standards, and there would be diagrams or other visuals incorporated into that ordinance, and then going forward with adopting it through planning commission and city council.
Okay, so communications and logistics.
Graphic design is actually a lot of the cost. Because I can't do that, so I'd have to hire somebody to do it. We don't have a graphic designer on staff. That would be awesome. You know, just putting that out there to our
I always recommend hiring, I always recommend hiring artists. Okay, so we know if we rezoned it and the ballot initiative passed, it would pretty much undo that. What about the mixed neighborhood overlay? If we put that, implemented that onto the Jacob's campus and then the HFA ballot initiative passed, what effect would that have?
The ballot initiative is really focused on what uses are allowed, and then it requires that forty percent of the site be reserved for high-density residential. So I think we just have to make sure that the overlay is written in a way that doesn't impede any of that. If it was just focused on design and form, then I don't anticipate it conflicting with the initiative.
Okay, so the overlay would be more like what it could look like, not necessarily what can happen there.
Right. It wouldn't be controlling uses. It would be controlling form.
Okay. I think that's all my, I think everything else I have is comments. I'm good on questions. Somebody else wants to go?
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for this. And also thank you to Councilmember Moulton for the public meeting. I continue to find it very informative. Let's see, first, I'll just preface with, I think overlays are cool, and I think form-based code is cool, so anyway, you have that. But so if an overlay were to be developed and the, the site remained public, right, it's currently zoned public, could, like, basically, could an overlay be incongruent with a public zoning? Like, would eventually the site have to be rezoned in order to apply a overlay if it was incongruent with the?
Yeah, I think the type of, the focus of the overlay will be on housing and commercial, so it wouldn't be an overlay that would apply to public facilities based zone.
Yeah, that's fine. Cool. I just wanted to make sure I had that clear. And then, do you think, and, you know, I mean, I'm excited that there would be a lot of public input around this, and we don't necessarily know what the overlay would be. But could you anticipate, were a really cool overlay to be developed, that it would potentially apply to other sites in Eureka and could just be a useful tool in general?
Yeah, that's my thinking, is that it would be a useful tool both to help us all understand what our density requirements mean because there, nobody knows what FAR is, so it'd be really helpful to have visuals of what different densities can look like. And then also, looking forward, if at any time in the future we're going to be, you know, up-zoning a transitional area or something, but we're concerned about nearby neighborhoods and how that might affect their character, we could apply this overlay in those situations. That's part of the cost of the, the general overlay, is we'd be looking at a number of neighborhoods in the city to develop that overlay to make sure it was like more broadly appropriate. Whereas if we were just focused on the Jacob site and just doing a site-specific overlay, we'd just be looking at that neighborhood and that site.
And then, and as someone who lives in site, in neighborhood commercial, neighborhood commercial, Sue, cool. But, but, just the last question, it seems like in both the zoning change and the overlay option, the public process would be sort of equally as robust.
Correct. It's just that if we were doing a general overlay, we wouldn't be so focused on the Jacob site. We would be thinking more about single-family neighborhoods in general.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. So, just so I understand, this is just us giving direction tonight. We're not voting on the proposed steps, correct?
Correct.
Though there may be a cost associated depending on the direction that we choose.
That would be correct.
Okay. And I think it was stated earlier that we don't know the intent of the property owner, that we can take, you know, our shot to guess at who or who it may not be. They haven't
It's still, it's still the school district that owns it, just to be correct, just to be, yeah. But they're in escrow with a developer. And the developer hasn't approached us to tell us, but they do have a website where they talk generally, but they're not specific.
Right, right. So they haven't reached out, but have we made the attempt to reach out and ask them?
Yes, multiple times.
Okay. And have we done anything like this in the past on something that's in escrow or newly purchased where we've either changed the land use designation or we've approved a new overlay?
I, I know that we've done an overlay before, which Kenyon, Director Kenyon made reference to, but since I've been here at the city and I think that Assistant City Manager Powell may have a little more history, but I am not aware of us going through a city council process to rezone a property that has exchanged hands.
I mean, with our comprehensive zoning, inland zoning code update, we did rezone a number of properties. That was a city initiative amendment where
Yeah, like as a part of the general plan and the changes that we made in doing zoning code updates, we have done that before.
And we're working on it for the LCP too, for the coastal zone.
I mean, in relation to the property that's still in escrow, though, like, is this something novel that we're looking at? Or have we done something similar in the past that we've been going to?
If we looked at all of the properties, I'm sure that when we did that rezoning, there was likely some of those properties that were in escrow within that area that we're doing the rezoning, but I'm not aware of anything specific.
Yeah, if we've done that and I know about it, it's, it's been initiated by the property owner, not the city, the rezone.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'll get to that when I get to comments. And then I, I know we've talked about the potential of the do-nothing option. What is the likely cost increase for the other two items if we were to say, let's just wait and see what happens?
It would be the same. So the other two options, if we chose to do this two years from now, I mean, depending on inflation, if there wasn't inflation, we would, we would likely be spending the same amount of money on an overlay if we did it two years from now. Or if we did SEQA on a rezone, depending on the cost of living and any changes, it would be the same process.
Well, I guess I'm asking, would it be like, you know, it's, it's inflation, it's likely going to happen next year, the year after. So would it be likely negligible is what I'm trying to figure out. Like, would it be seventy-six thousand potentially, or would it be more than that?
I, I can't answer whether or not it would be negligible or not. I can tell you that the processes that were outlined by Director Kenyon, regardless of when we did this, unless we made major changes to our, you know, ordinances and zoning code, the processes would be the same.
And then I, I understand, yeah, well, no, that's probably best saved for a comment too. But with the first two that were offered there, we would be hosting, I guess, what would be the equivalent of a second town hall, saying this is the direction that the city has given staff. We want to get more input from neighborhood residents.
Correct. I would foresee it as starting to really drill down into what things, like if it was site-specific, you know, what the people feel is appropriate, what people would want, and really get into details about site layout, or if it was the overlay, we'd be looking at typologies of buildings and, and surveying the audience about how they felt about different building types and things like that.
All right, that's, that's everything I have for the moment.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, Director Kenyon, I'd like to get a broader sense of, of community development going on. So we've, we've looked at, you know, talked about a lot of housing projects, whether it's Earth Center, Sunny and Myrtle. How many essentially project, large-scale projects do we have occurring in the city right now?
Oh, gosh.
Right?
It's a lot.
I mean, roughly, you think, is there three hundred units? Is there seven projects? Just trying to give the public a sense.
There's five projects that are on city property that we're actively helping with and helping with community meetings on and stuff for affordable housing. And then there's other private developments happening, like the ACGC, two mixed-use developments in Old Town that are large developments.
And are staff pretty consumed by these projects as far as time goes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're really busy. Yeah, we did reach out to a consultant for, for like, you know, how much it would cost to take, because we can always expand our capacity by hiring consultants to help us with planning work.
We're pretty busy right now.
Yes, we're swamped.
Okay. I just want to get a sense of what this would entail for staff to undertake another large project that we may not have much say over in the, in the end.
Yeah, we have a lot of balls in the air. Adding another ball just means, you know, some other stuff is taking longer. You know, like I might not have times to work on the LCP update because I'm working on this.
Thank you.
There so is that opportunity cost.
Yeah, thanks.
Any further questions from council? Okay, seeing none, we'll open this item up to the public. Is there anyone here that would like to comment on this item?
I need help with this, so I'm just going to flip for the audience through the pictures that you had before you. I guess they're gone now.
You need to- Yeah, we have them. And would you be willing to speak into the mic, please?
Yes, Thomas Stewart, I'm here tonight to present the facts of this shenanigan. Cal Poly Humboldt is building an extremely high-density housing project in Arcata. This structure will house approximately one thousand students, and only three hundred parking spaces, and will be Cal, the county's tallest structure to date. Cal Poly will need to build at least six more of these to meet their housing demand due to their double enrollment plan. Cal Poly is a short proximity, they're short three thousand parking places currently, and don't have parking for their, even, any more bicycles. The Arcata Fire Department informed the council, they could not defend the structure of this size. The Arcata police may also have difficult time reaching the remote. As part of Arcata in a timely manner, the citizens of Arcata oppose this project. Silvercrest, Eureka, it's a five-story, high-density, low-income housing facility with a hundred and fifty apartments and approximately two acres in size. Silvercrest management would not tell me how many people live there. There's just forty-five parking spaces. The property is protected by a fortress-style steel fence is becoming the standard protecting property in Eureka. At your town hall meeting, your city manager was not aware of this building or its use. The Georgie Jacob site, which was shamelessly abandoned by the Eureka City Schools, the Jacob site was never properly secured. A chain-cutted fence around the perimeter that a baby could crawl under and a five-year-old could jump over. Because of lack of security, it had to be demolished at a cost of one point five million dollars. The concrete will still have to be removed by any new development. The site is still unsecure. Drug dealing is taking place there close to Alice Burney School. The Jacob site is approximately eight point three acres in size. Four Silvercrest structures could fit there with a maximum of six hundred people. The city of Eureka sold their parking lot, and is now owned by Security National, the sponsoring of the Year Housing For Initiative, which ironically will rezone Jacob's property that would allow high-density housing there. The initiative was signed July twenty-first of twenty-three. Your parking lot is barricaded by large concrete walks. The largest vacant property in Eureka is located near Eureka Waterfront, is approximately four to three acres. At your town hall meeting, I could, your, your planner, Steve Lizar, said you probably can't, you can't build there because of sea level rise. In this case, then, you probably shouldn't be building anywhere on Eureka Waterfront. As he told me, this, I was asked to leave because I was asked, taking too much of your staff time. The developer of the Jacob site has yet to con-
Thank you for your comments.
Your planning department approved the site last week without knowing what the developer wants to build there. I find this unbelievable.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to comment on this item? Okay, seeing no one, wow, we got a lot on Zoom. Let's start with Matt.
Good evening, council. First, I just want to clarify, I'm commenting just myself, that's it.
Is there a way to turn that up? I can't hear. Oh, could you speak a little louder, Matt? It's hard to hear you.
Could be one second.
Thanks. Oh, your time is ticking, though.
We can come back to him.
Mayor, could we go to someone else?
Yeah.
Matt, we'll come back to you, while you figure that out. That way you'll get your full three minutes. Patty?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Hello again. I just wanted to commend whoever actually put together this presentation. And Katie, it looks like your town hall was a huge success. Honestly, it's, it's impressive, and this is the kind of information we expect from our city and staff, and, but on the flip side of that, back to my bike plan meeting, in comparison, you all are talking about a privately-owned property, but yet the bike plan is for our public streets, and we're getting not even near the level of information that you just gave with this presentation. So I hope that city staff can take note and possibly help the bike, bike plan committees, or whoever's putting on. It's just, it's, it's like your night and day, and it looks really odd to me. It almost looks like you're, you know, you're, you're keeping, you're keeping the bike plan at bay, but this is huge forefront, super important, private-owned property, but you're talking about doing things to our neighborhoods and our streets, and it was a, you know, half-assed presentation, and not even, you know, five minutes. And here we are, I don't even know how long into this one. But again, it's impressive, and whoever's doing the work is doing a great job. I do, I want to reiterate that all future meetings need to be in this capacity. We were told that the bike plan meeting had to be at Jacobs, because, or Jefferson, because of size, that they were expecting fifty to seventy people, yet you just said you had sixty in-house and chamber. So bike plan people, take note, we're watching, and we do have huge expectations. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Althea? Althea, you're muted.
Yep, sorry, I was looking at my maps. So, yeah, I do want to remind the council and staff that when we call a housing development a housing project, people get a very prejudiced, outdated, racist, classist idea of what a project is. So really, let's be careful and use the term development, because this is development. People like to see development that shows that we are a city that is capable of, you know, building new things and having investment. So let's, let's eliminate the word "project" from our vocabularies. I'm not quite sure why there is fear-mongering about Silvercrest. Silvercrest is a pretty great place, from what I can tell. I don't see problems with parking there from the residents. Many of those residents who are seniors, who are disabled, get around using public transit. I see them on the bus quite a bit. There's a bus stop right out front. Many of them walk to Open Door, or they walk to CVS to get their, their snacks and stuff like that. You know, that is an example of a tall, dense development, but it's not a bad place. It's not a bad thing to have. You know, as far as the balloon tract, you know, again, that's not city-owned, that's owned by a private company. City can't do anything with that. It's not the city's property. And, yeah, I just, you know, I support development at Jacobs. I think that having mid-rise density there will leave a lot more room for people to have the amenities that they're asking for, you know, the coffee shop, the restaurant, the dog park. Well, if you only have single-family homes, you don't physically have room for those things. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Althea. Shannon Townsend? Welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
I've utilized the Jacobs property for a long time, living in that neighborhood for about six years. I don't live there anymore, but I'm glad to see it having attention. It's a little confusing, listening to some of the speakers, because it's not owned by the city. It's owned by the city schools, and now there's some unknown owner, that we don't really know who they are. So talking about what's going to happen there is a little bit kind of vague. But it's a great opportunity to consider community development, hopefully, there. I used to take my dog there and let her play and run around until we had a really bad experience, where she got attacked by another dog, and the owner quickly left. So I could not pursue them to pay for the vet bill. And, yeah, there was blight there as well. I do know the soccer league use the, the field. And, yeah, I would recommend that you don't do anything until we figure out who this mysterious owner is, and, and what their plans are for the property. Seems a little bit kind of interesting that all this happened behind closed doors, as far as the sale of the property, and, and who the school district sold the property to, and, and all that. It seems just kind of icky to me. So I, I don't think we should do anything as a city until we figure out what their intentions are. And hopefully, they're good for this community, and that, that we can pursue something. But I don't, I wouldn't recommend doing anything in anticipation of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Philip?
Hello. I'm excited by the possibility of having an overlay for residential areas that have opportunities to densify. As a homeowner myself, with somewhat of an oversized property, that would remove one barrier on any journey I take towards adding to the housing stock of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. I can't see that number, can you?
A phone number ending in one-eight-one-six.
Hello?
Hi there. Hi.
Okay, yeah, so anyways, yeah, I thought Shannon made a really good point about the ludicrousness of this discussion even going on anyway, because for months, you guys have been saying that this property doesn't belong to the city, it belongs to Eureka City Schools. And so you have nothing to do with what goes on there. And now the property's supposedly been sold to a secret, private developer, and yet you're having these discussions as if anything that we say means a thing. That's, that's awfully clever of you, but it's disingenuous at the same time. Because nothing that we have to say here will have any effect on anything. That being said, I think it's highly ironic that, at the same time, that the city is expressing a desire to meet the state-mandated low-income housing projections by building developments on all of our parking lots in Old Town. At the same time they're doing that, the spot that would have been the perfect place for all of those developments, has now been sold to an unnamed private developer. And I think it's really, and I mean, it's, I don't know what kind of business you all think you're running, but as a business that's supposed to be taking care of the public trust, it seems to me that selling a piece of public property to a private developer without knowing their intentions for said property is, 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 is a total lack of any kind of competence whatsoever. You know, and then I, then I see that, okay, you've sold the property, but then one of your people there listed all these studies and stuff, economic studies and zoning studies, that we are going to do at our expense for this private developer. Now, isn't that what, a private, okay, a private developer buys a piece of property? That, those, those studies are their responsibility, not ours. So I'm not sure, you guys are basically making yourselves look incredibly disingenuous and incredibly incompetent up there. I appreciate you giving us this time to, 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 to express ourselves, but, but we understand that you're lying to us. What we say doesn't mean anything to you. But, unless we rise up en masse. But, so thank you for letting me have my say, and, and thank you for pretending like you care. But anyways, I know you don't.
Sorry you feel that way. Matt Simmons. Matt Simmons.
Good evening, city council. Can you all hear me okay now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Sorry about the problem earlier. So I don't have thoughts on whether you should do this overlay or this upzoning now, prior to the ballot measure, hopefully failing. I do have some thoughts, though, on housing. You all had a report earlier today on the rental vacancy rate being shockingly low in Eureka. And, you know, research has shown that rental vacancy rate being that low leads to rent increases. It also can lead to an increased unhoused population, as more and more people are unable to make rent and find a place to live. You know, the housing market is basically a game of musical chairs. And right now in Eureka, there are not enough houses for the number of people who need them. And so as you are thinking about the future of this property, and parking lots, and lots of other properties throughout the city, think about ways to allow there to be more homes to be built, so that we can hopefully get more people into them, lower folks' rents, stop rents from increasing, and just create a better city. Thank you.
Thank you. And do you see anybody else up on Zoom?
I see no one else on Zoom.
Okay, so we will bring it back to council for direction and comments. Councilmember Castellano?
Okay. Firstly, there was a fair amount of misinformation and public comment. If, if folks have a problem with the Jacob site being in escrow to a private developer, I'd just suggest taking that up with Eureka City Schools. That is not at all under the purview of council. And any speculation at the expense of the integrity of city staff or council has nothing related, is, is not at all related to this issue. So please note that. In terms of the matter at hand, and, you know, not kind of random speculation, I do think that, you know, the, as we've seen, the public is very kind of activated, you know, around this site, that's, you know, it's regularly in the news. I don't necessarily think that the conversation has to be completely dictated by an election cycle. But I do think it would be worthwhile to continue to kind of nourish the public's interest in talking about land use, you know, overlays, things like that. I personally think an overlay could be a useful tool for, you know, potentially the site, but potentially, you know, just many other sites in the city. So I'm, you know, as council member, I have, have an interest in exploring that, and just in kind of continuing to support public conversation around land use, and really what serves neighborhood interests, whether they be the Jacob site or other sites in general.
Councilmember Moulton?
I'd like to make a comment as to why. Why did I bring this up? Why did I ask staff to come back with these options for us? And it is about that engagement of the public. It's because people are fired up about this right now. And the folks in the second ward, we have the most kids with young families. We are the, the poorest and most diverse neighborhood in town. And therefore, I would guess we're probably some of the folks with the least amount of time to, to head out on an evening and engage in politics. And the fact that we got a hundred people in this chamber and on Zoom to talk about this, not just to complain, but to bring out their ideas for what they wanted, I want to capture that. I think that the people of the second ward deserve to have their voices heard. I think that we need to catch this now, and not let it dissolve and become a footnote, and let the Jacobs campus be a pawn in the broader scheme of everything that is happening in Eureka. I don't like the idea of spending money that could potentially just end up going out the window. So I do like the idea of creating a zoning overlay that would address the concerns of the folks in the neighborhood, and have multiple purposes going down the road. So we can spend money creating something that would not just be useful on the Jacobs campus, and to satisfy the concerns of the folks in the second- and to satisfy the concerns of the folks in the second ward, but also be of use to the city going forward. Because the cost of not doing anything is not nothing. The cost of not doing anything is the input, the goodwill, the happiness of the people in the second ward that live right around here that we're talking about.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. While while I wasn't on the school board when Jacob closed or was surplus and was was left to dilapidate, I was elected to the school board in 2018 and it took almost, say about a year and a half, maybe, maybe a little less, just to get it moving towards tearing it down. And a large portion of that had to do with having conversations like we had at the at the town hall just earlier this year with the District Two folks from that neighborhood. And so I I understand the anxiety that goes with it, especially since it seems that a lot has just happened to that property in such a short amount of time over these last two years anyway. Prior to that, it just sat there. It's still very early in the process from my perspective, but I can understand the urgency with the want and the need to know what's of to become of Jacobs. And the ballot measure doesn't help and only delays and exacerbates that confusion until November 5. Though as the property is, it's still in escrow. I'm inclined to say to wait just because we, nothing's, I can't say that nothing's happened, but there's been no transfer as of yet. Though I am in favor of an overlay, I do believe it would serve us to hold another town hall to discuss what that means. I'm I'm not inclined to approve another $40,000 until we're better able to educate what that means and how that would impact the neighborhood.
Thank you, Councilmember Bauer.
I feel like I should say I agree with everybody. I agree that an overlay would be great. I agree, though, probably most strongly with Councilmember Fernandez about the do nothing. This is such a interesting situation. I feel like, you know, we all desire housing. I think we're unanimous in that. We have a lot of a lot of developments that are in the works that we're trying to keep momentum on. And to, you know, spend money and for something hypothetical that, like Councilmember Fernandez just said about, you know, we don't know any, you know, still in escrow, there's all these factors that are a real challenge for us to consider. And I just feel like until we know what's going to happen in November, that we should probably focus our efforts on what we already know we can do, what we're doing, what staff are doing, and wait it out and see what happens. So that's kind of where I'm leaning. Or leaning. Thank you.
Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak again. You know, it seems like there's, you know, some different perspectives on council, which I think is amazing and healthy. And, you know, coming back to the idea that, and I do appreciate the concerns for staff time and all of, you know, and I do share those concerns. But, you know, Councilmember Molton, who's, you know, represents the ward that Jacobs is in, you know, is located in, I deeply appreciate her perspective on it, you know, in terms of the citizens who live there. And I'm just wondering if perhaps a compromise kind of space would be that, again, right, like, you know, the overlay conversation does not have to be like, oh, it has to be done by November 6 or whatever, right? You know, I feel like the, you know, there could be some cost savings that could be had in terms of, you know, like, maybe we don't need to spend as much on a graphic designer or things like that, but at least to keep some conversations going around this in terms of what kind of use it could be and, you know, in different kinds of land uses that wouldn't, you know, and I think this is maybe a question for Director Kenyon is just, you know, in terms of, like, right, not wanting to sideline waylay, you know, the other projects you're working on. You know, like, what seems realistic to you? If you were, if, you know, council could find some consensus in terms of moving forward with, you know, some public input and, you know, thinking towards an overlay without also kind of, you know, taking over what else is happening at the staff level.
Yeah, we could, you know, just maybe start off with a public meeting and then see where it goes and not commit to doing the whole process right away.
Councilmember Molton?
Thank you. I understand that, you know, if we do something, it might get changed. But if something is going to happen at the Jacobs campus, it's not likely it's going to be a school again. And it's going to change to something. And I think that it should get changed from what the people in the public want it to be. I think we need to start there, that that needs to be our ground that we're standing on. If we were to create a mixed neighborhood overlay, would that be an efficiency in other developments? Would it create, having that already ready to go with the public input process that can be applied in different areas, we've already kind of come up with everything, we've already got the graphics done. Would that make it easier and faster to integrate higher density housing into single family neighborhoods?
Yes, I foresee it being helpful in the future.
So it could be a short term expenditure of staff time, but a long term savings.
Sure, yeah.
I just wanted to add that there's been comments made about the overlay and how it would change. An overlay would not change with the ballot measure. If the overlay went through, the ballot measure would have no effect on that overlay.
And it would remain useful and be useful in other parts of the city, doing work that would need to be done in other places ahead of time.
Is that a question? That was a rhetorical question.
That was a comment. We're in comments.
Great. Councilmember Fernandez?
You're muted, Councilmember Fernandez.
Yeah, that's that's why I was apprehensive to use the language that was provided earlier on the the do nothing when I was saying that we should we should wait because there are still other avenues to take in terms of, again, I think the way that Director Kenyon had put it, we could have another public meeting. My my concern here is that people don't understand what an overlay is. Even though I'm in favor of that, I'm not inclined to say absolutely, let's do that until people have a better understanding of what that means. And so I think it was Councilmember Castellano who was saying there might be some sort of compromise, I guess, or at least some sort of alternative to saying, let's let's move forward with this. When when really I I want to make sure that the folks in the neighborhood, and again, I understand this is this is your ward, Councilmember Molton. I'm just inclined to provide as much education I can in a situation like this before saying absolutely.
Councilmember Molton?
Thank you. Wouldn't, it sounds to me like the option to the mixed neighborhood overlay part of that process and part of that expense would be the public meeting, the public education, you know, like the communications and logistic aspects of teaching the public and then gathering their input based on the specific education about like how things would look or how things would lay out.
Correct.
Okay, so we couldn't have that public, that's what we're asking right now is do we do the rezoning and focus entirely on Jacobs? Do we do mixed neighborhood zoning overlay, which in order to move forward at all would have this expense, but would be useful in a variety of ways in the city? Or do we do nothing?
Or just, or just starting with a public meeting to talk more about overlays and options and things like that.
Potentially a town hall that's purely educational about zoning overlays.
I guess.
Somehow I don't see that being as enthusiastically participated in.
I get it.
As the town hall we have already hosted and gotten a lot of feedback from and spent a lot of time analyzing the the feedback from. What? Leslie has something.
Councilmember Castellano?
I mean, I think that, you know, it doesn't have to be just like a abstract overlay town hall, right? Like, it makes sense to have some context and that context be the Jacobs site as a case example of what it might look like, right? You know, and I think that is a useful study because it's, you know, very much in the attention. And I think that would get, you know, people, you know, participating and thinking and also simultaneously learning about the the great magnificence of overlays.
Do you want us to bring back this next council meeting for, with a, you know, recommended motion and see how it goes or?
We don't have consensus, so that may be the way to move forward.
I wonder if we might be able to to narrow a little bit so that next time's meeting when we do bring you know, an up or down motion type option, we have disposed of things that we don't want to see move forward and maybe come back with something else. I'm hearing some consensus around not necessarily being that in favor of a rezone at this stage. And so if the question is, you know, whether and how we go about either an overlay or or something lesser modified, I think we could definitely bring something back in those two realms next time that might be more solid. So you guys have a, you know, a yes or no option.
What do y'all think? Thumbs up, thumbs down?
I'd be satisfied with further conversation. It sounds like most of us are not totally in favor and wouldn't necessarily be in favor of rezoning outright with the cost and the potential waste of effort and money there. But we want more information about the potential for a mixed neighborhood zoning overlay and how that would look. So I'm all for information. Let's have more conversations and keep the talk going.
Councilmember Fernandez? All right. Thumbs up. We got a general consensus, everybody.
Yeah, I'm I'm happy with that. How do you feel about that?
Yeah, I'm hearing we provide more information on the mixed neighborhood overlay option and a potential recommended motion for moving forward next meeting.
Thank you so much. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you very much.
This has been a very robust conversation and an important one. And I appreciate all the different things we've heard tonight. So now we'll move on to the Housing Element Annual Progress Report with Director Kenyon?
Yep, just trying to pull up my PowerPoint.
Oh, wait, did I say the general plan? I meant the Housing Element Annual Plan. I did say the housing. I did now.
Okay. All right, Housing Element Annual Report. This is our Housing Element Annual Report for the year 2023. Which is something we do every year. It's required by the state. State Housing Element Law requires every city and county in California to plan for a share of the state's total projected housing need in their housing elements, which is part of their general plans. This happens on an eight year cycle and the current Housing Element cycle runs through 2027. It's the State Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, that determines how much housing at various affordability levels is needed for each region. That's known as the Regional Housing Needs Allocation. The state allocated Humboldt 3,390 dwelling units for the current cycle, so that's a goal of of building that many net new units during this cycle. And the state divides those into income levels. And then the Humboldt County Association of Governments, as the regional planning agency, is responsible for allocating that regional arena to individual jurisdictions within the region. And HCOG allocated Eureka 952 units, which is 28% of the countywide arena. That city share is based on our percent of the regional population and our percent of the regional workforce, averaging those two percentages. Like the countywide arena, the city's arena suballocation is divided into four income categories. And for a housing unit to count towards a certain income category, it needs to be affordable to households in that income category. And we learned earlier tonight, that means spending 30% or less of your monthly income on housing and including utilities. State law requires the city to provide adequate land with adequate density and appropriate development standards to accommodate the arena, and we must report on our progress towards meeting our arena each year. So we report in this spreadsheet that HCD has created for us. And we have to report in four different ways, which is confusing when you look at the numbers. We're reporting on complete applications that have been submitted for new housing units, building permits approved. That's when building, fire, planning and public works have all signed off on the permit, but it hasn't yet been issued. Once the when a building permit is issued, it means fees have been paid and construction can begin. And that's the third thing we report on. And then finally, we track and report when a certificate of occupancy is granted. That means all required inspections have been completed and passed and people can start living in the residence. We also call this finaling of the building permit. HCD tracks progress towards RENA based on our reporting on building permits issued, which is surprising to me that it's when we give the go ahead for construction that we count the unit rather than when it actually starts to be occupied. One thing to keep in mind when reviewing the Housing Element Annual Progress Report is that we are just reporting on housing units, new housing units as defined by HCD. A housing unit is a house, an apartment, a mobile home, a group of rooms or a single room that is intended for occupancy as separate living quarters. It includes accessory dwelling units, home key conversions of motels or hotels into permanent housing and single room occupancy units. In contrast, it does not include shared living quarters like dorms or assisted living facilities with group living arrangements or quarters in institutions or general hospitals. So for instance, the Sora Leaf Healing Center is this great project under construction, but its bedrooms don't count towards RENA because it's a group quarters institutional setting. Student housing of any kind doesn't count. And quarters in predominantly transient hotels don't count. Another thing to keep in mind is that except when we include prior years, the information shown in the Housing Element Report is only for any permits applied for and any building permits approved, issued or finalized during that year we're reporting on. So in this case, between January 1 and December 31 of 2023. So for example, I'm sure you all saw Laurel Canyon Senior Housing on Seventh and Myrtle being constructed in 2023. But I didn't get to report on it in this 2023 APR because they applied for design review in 2020. Their building permit was approved and issued in 2022. And they didn't get their certificate of occupancy till the beginning of 2024. So that project got reported on in three Housing Element years, but not 2023. This map shows housing units where a complete application was received in 2023. It includes 30 separate projects totaling 47 housing units. As you can see, the vast majority of the units were accessory dwelling units. 26 of these projects only required a ministerial building permit for required discretionary approvals. This four story mixed use building at Third and G that's going to be constructed, that was the most onerous process. It required four discretionary approvals. This project will have 13 new market rate housing units above two ground floor retail spaces. Here's the map showing building permits issued in 2023. So these are the numbers that are counting towards our arena. There there were building permits issued for 20 separate separate projects totaling 29 units. And 21 of those 29 units were accessory dwelling units. So we finally reached our goal of getting over 20 accessory dwelling units in a year. This final map is issued certificates of occupancy. There's 21 projects totaling 70 new units. And 49 of those units were the Providence and 49 of those units were the Providence Supportive Housing Project on Fourth Street, where the motel was converted into 48 very low-income and one manager's unit. This table shows our progress to date on our arena by income category. This table is generated automatically in the reporting spreadsheet provided by HCD based on what we reported in 2023 and what we reported in past years. It shows that we've only constructed 152 units, which is just 16% of our arena and that we have barely issued any building permits for very low-income units, just seven. Luckily, I do not think this table is correct and I think we're actually further along at 218 units or 23% of our arena and 104 very low-income units. We counted Laurel Canyon as low, but I believe it's very low and we failed to report on the two home key projects, the Providence one I just showed and then the UROC Arcade House Partnership one on Third and Fourth. So not as far along as we want to be, but not as bad as our, that spreadsheet indicated. I just wanted to end this. I know it's late. There were 37 distinct accessory dwelling units where a building permit was approved, issued or final in 2023 and I looked at them. They ranged in size from 300 to 1,200 square feet with an average square footage of 600, around 600. 15 were new construction, 22 were conversion of existing space. Looking at just the ones that were conversions of existing spaces, a lot of them were converting garages. The average and median cost for conversion, conversion of an existing space is around 40, 45, $46,000. I then looked at the ones that are new construction and I had to pull out ones that involved other stuff too because the valuation was based on all of the project. But, um, this is the ones that were just ADUs. It's much more expensive than conversion of existing space. And the two yellow ones are actually prefab units that were built on new foundations and surprisingly, they cost just as much as the new construction. And just to advertise accessory dwelling units, mostly they only require a building permit. They're allowed on any parcel in any district in conjunction with a single or multifamily dwelling. Sewer and water impact fees are waived. No parking space is required for the ADU and if you have existing covered parking that you're eliminating to create the ADU, like converting a garage, replacement parking is not required. And it doesn't count towards maximum density floor area ratio or site coverage standards. So it's a bonus unit that you get above standards. Just to plug for ADUs. So we can get 20 more next year. Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Do we have any questions regarding this? Councilmember Castellano?
I'll be quick. Also, do we need to make a motion to continue the?
We will in six minutes.
Okay, I can't make it. Okay, I'll.
Oh, you can.
Okay. I'll make a motion to continue the meeting till 10, not that we have to go till 10, but till 10.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Aye.
Four yes votes. Councilmember Contreras Saloche absent, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. Is Providence now full? The site there? Does anyone know?
Yeah, there's actually a waiting list.
Oh, cool.
The, the Mother Bernard? The portion, yes.
Yes, that, sorry, I should be more clear. I was just curious. And this could come back at another time. Senior Home Repairs was mentioned, um, both in the Housing Element and the General Plan Annual Progress Report. And I was just curious, you know, $5,000 per year, just to, uh, hear more about how that's going and how it's been implemented.
That's our housing manager who's in the finance department, so I don't have details on that.
Yeah, we, uh, if you if you want us to bring it back to you, we can do that or you can send me an email. I can get, um, information out to council about it.
Had forgotten that we helped fund that and I was glad to see that on there. And then, that, that's enough for now.
Any further questions? Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? See anybody? Matt? Simmons?
You're muted, Matt. There we go.
Hi, uh, good evening, council. I'll be quick. I like, I have an expression about reading the numbers, that they're a floor, not a ceiling. HCD really underaccounts the number of units that we need. And so while they're helpful to have as a target, I would just encourage the city to look for ways to increase housing production even beyond, uh, what is state mandated. People should have a home, regardless of whether or not the state is forcing the city, uh, to allow that home to be built. Thank you.
Thank you. Althea?
I just wanted to thank Councilmember Castellano for bringing up the Senior Home Repair Program. I was not aware that the city contributed to that and I'm glad to know and maybe we will bring that to the participatory budgeting cycle to increase that funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you see anybody else?
I see no one else.
Seeing no one else, we're going to close the public comment and bring it back. But there's nothing really to vote on, so.
No, there's nothing to vote on.
Good, so let's move forward, shall we? General Plan Annual Progress Report.
All right, this is Senior Planner Castellano again and it's really short. Okay. All right, good evening again. Our government code, California Government Code, Section 65400, requires the city to submit an annual progress report on the implementation of its general plan to the city council and the state by April 1st each year. The General Plan APR included in your agenda packet highlights key accomplishments in implementing the city's 2040 General Plan during the calendar year 2023. The accomplishments are organized under their respective goals, goals, and the snippet of what that looks like is shown on this slide. This year's APR may not be a, a complete list as it was prepared in short notice and it is a bit different than the previous years. But it's a great start and we envision this report being more comprehensive next year. So you might be asking, what is a general plan? A general plan can be described as a local government's blueprint for how the city or county will grow and develop. Is required by Government Code, Section 65300, and it is a long-term planning. It has a long-term planning horizon of 20 to 25 years. The city's 2040 General Plan lays out the future of the city's development in general terms with, through a series of policy statements and maps and is the supreme document from which all local land use decisions must derive. As you can see, uh, by this land use planning hierarchy pyramid I pulled off the internet, the general plan is at the top and it is the most long-term general planning document. All the plans, maps and permits lower down on the pyramid must be consistent with the general plan and the general plan is the guiding document for all land use, development and resource decisions. All general plans in California must include seven mandatory elements. That's land use, housing, open space, conservation, safety, circulation and noise, but it can include additional optional elements that speak to other topics of local interest. The 2040 general plans required and optional elements are presented in the following five sections, which provide the goals and policies to guide the city's short-term and long-term decision-making. Section 3.1, our community relating to land use and housing, which is the 2019-2027 Housing Element, which you just got an update from Chris, Director Kenyon. The economy, historic and cultural preservation. Section 3.2, our environment relating to natural resources and open space, agriculture, timberlands and air quality and climate change. Section 3.3, our civic resources related to arts and culture, parks and recreation and community services. Section 3.4, our infrastructure relating to mobility and utilities and Section 3.5, our well-being related to human health, safety and noise. So I'll share a timeline for development of approval of the 2040 General Plan to wrap up this presentation. In 2013, the city embarked on a comprehensive update of its general plan, which has, which was last updated in 1997. The update process involved extensive community outreach and engagement over five years, including stakeholder interviews, community workshops, web-based virtual town halls, focus groups, landowner requests, city council and planning commission check-in sessions, an EIR scoping meeting, general plan update website, flyers, media releases and public hearings. In October 2018, the 2040 General Plan was adopted and then six months later, the city began the Housing Element update and in December 2019, the housing, the 2019 through 2027 Housing Element was adopted. Although the Housing Element is a component of the general plan, they are on different cycles where the Housing Element is updated every eight years while the general plans is every 20 to 25 years. So we are just recommending you receive the report and, um, any, if you need any changes, we can do that before we submit. Don't need to act on it. Once you do, we'll submit it to the State Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, and the Office of Planning and Research, OPR, by the April 1st deadline. Thank you, I'm here for questions.
Great, any questions? I can't see. I can't see Councilmember Fernandez.
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for that report. Oh, no, do I need to? No. Yes, no. Public comment?
We typically do on these.
Yeah, so is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this item? You see anybody on Zoom?
Is there anybody that would like to comment on this item? I see none.
Great. Thank you. We do have a question. Councilmember Castellano?
It's just a quick comment. I just, though general plans are maybe not the thing that everyone is attracted to reading, you know, when they're on the agenda, I do feel like, um, you get a really good picture of all of the many things that are happening at the city. So I just want to encourage the general public, if sometimes you're like, what is the city doing? It's, it's a good place to start. So that's all.
And I'll just add a comment to that. It's an easy read and it's beautiful. It's, it's wonderful to be able to read it. We, when it first came out, we've read through it and going back and being able to locate things has been really good. So I too would encourage the public to read it, get involved.
Councilmember Bauer?
Perfect, uh, Councilmember Castellano because I was thinking, people ask, why are you doing that project? And it's like, it's been a general plan for a few years, you know? These are things that we've all decided upon and, or, you know, walkable communities, housing. It's all right there. And if you're a planner, they're, they're wonderful documents and I, I, that's my background and I enjoy them, but they are really useful and it's really readable and it's a great, a great document. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Did you have public comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. Where can you get the general plan? Where can the public see the general plan?
It's on the website?
Yeah, if you go to the City Eureka's website, go to Development Services and Planning. It is, it is there. Yep.
Thank you, I brought them.
Great question. Thank you so much for that clarification. Okay, we'll move on to future agenda items. Who has one? Councilmember Castellano?
This is not a matter of urgency, but I did notice, and I forget if it was the general plan or the Housing Element. You know, this is, there was a reference to the homeless strategy and master plan. And, uh, I think it would just be great. Maybe not next, you know, in a time that works well for staff to get an update on that.
What do people think? Thumbs up, thumbs down? Hands up, hands down? Looks like we have. Okay, great. Thank you. So that will be being brought back. And then Councilmember Fernandez?
Uh, in a similar vein, I know we touch on it in the, in the general plan, but I'm hoping to get more of an update about, uh, street pavement and rehabilitation. So the CIP is going to be coming to you guys, um, first meeting in April, if not a special meeting, so it's coming.
Okay, then, that answers that.
Okay. Okay. One more thing. Councilmember Bauer?
Sorry. Uh, you know, if you pay attention to what's going on in the county, talking about a ban on nitrous oxide and if anybody has ever walking in a rural area and finding a big pile of nitrous oxide containers and I happen to have met a few people that are kind of wiped out by excessive use of, of that. I, I wouldn't mind exploring what the county's doing and whether it's something the city wants to do to protect our residents. So it's just an idea.
What does council think about that? So you're talking about whippets?
Exactly.
Exactly. Great, thank you. I've been home for two weeks. I'm a little, uh, punchy right now. All right.
We're talking about their potential restriction, not council's use of them, right?
Uh, City Manager Reports.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and Council. First, I want to thank our Development Services staff for having a, a great work ethic and being able to read the room very well and still provide efficient reports and reach all of the pertinent issues that need to be discussed. So thank you very much. So tonight we have an update from Assistant Planner Ponce, um, about our neighborhood naming. That was a part of our strategic visioning process and, um, here she is, thank you.
Hello, I decided not to do a PowerPoint and just speak on this and wrap it up as quickly as we can. So I'm Assistant Planner Ponce. I'm here to provide a brief update on the Name Your Neighborhood project and so far it's going pretty well. We've collected over 144 names from various forms of outreach. Planning staff started asking people to name their neighborhood at the Friday Night Market last June. We also set up tables at College of the Redwoods in Cal Poly. I'm hoping that we could do more tabling now that the days are longer and the weather's getting warmer. And if any organization, event leader or local business owner is listening and you're willing to let us table outside your event or on your property, please contact us. That'd be great. We've set up laminated maps for people to write down their neighborhood names in the lobby and the council chambers, but I think my easel got commandeered. But that's okay, we'll set it up again later. We've also created flyers and posted them in local businesses and we had media coverage on the project from the Redwood News Station, the Time Standard and the Arcata High School Newspaper. I have presented and advertised the project to several committee meetings, including Historic Preservation, Design Review, Planning Commission and OSPR. In October, we published a Talk Eureka webpage dedicated to the Neighborhood Effort. Talk Eureka is a website which hosts a variety of city projects and events, which creates a space for community members to submit ideas, questions and comments on city projects such as this one. If you haven't been to that website, I highly encourage you going to check it out and Name Your Neighborhood. Last fall, Cozy Hunter showed the Talk Eureka project, uh, for the Name Your Neighborhood Project to council during her Talk Eureka presentation. Since October, the website has had about 500 views and of those 500 views, 38 people have contributed to naming ideas on the website. I think the Talk Eureka platform constrains how people can engage with this type of project because most of the people are using, uh, the website on their phone and it may be hard for them to use the mapping tools. We've also started working with a local high school student who is going to help us with the Name Your Neighborhood Effort as part of their AP Government Class Project. And moving forward, we want to do more targeted outreach to areas that we have not received as many names for. We would love suggestions for outreach to get more people to participate. Once we receive enough broad input, um, the next step of the project will be to present and analyze all the feedback. It's not just a naming neighborhood effort, it also becomes an effort to map out neighborhood boundaries and we anticipate the most difficult part will be determining where one neighborhood ends and where another begins and drawing those boundaries. We anticipate putting together a survey where we ask the community to vote on their favorite neighborhood map and name options and hopefully the local news can help promote that survey. After we've received results from the community, we will create a final map with the new neighborhood names and present that to council for review. If council decides to adopt an official neighborhood map, we will also want to establish a process for the community to petition to change names and boundaries in the future. Once we have a final map, we would like to collaborate with other city departments to see how we can incorporate those new names. to see how we can incorporate those new names into the neighborhoods, either by placing placards on the street signs, or doing sidewalk art, or murals, banners, things like that. So if anyone here is listening in chambers or on Zoom, and they're not asleep yet, and you haven't named your neighborhood, please go to our Talk Urica webpage or go to the map that's outside council chambers and go Name Your Neighborhood. Thank you. That's all that we have for now.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And council reports. Let's start with Castellano. Councilmember Castellano?
Okay, let's see. I did travel to Willets for the Redwood Empire Cal Cities meeting. And I will be traveling to Burbank this Thursday through Saturday for the Cal Cities Policy Committee meeting, where I'll be participating in the Housing, Community, and Economic Development Policy Committee. I also attended the Urica Main Street Board Meeting, as well as the Urica Main Street Economic Vitality Meeting, the bike meeting, and maybe that's about it? And, you know, continuing to talk to the public. Oh, yes, I do plan to host a town hall on Tuesday, April 30th, the special 5th Tuesday in April. And I haven't set this theme yet, so if folks are out there in my ward and have ideas. But one of the things that I'm interested in focusing on is just building neighborhood connection and community. So that's, that's what I'm thinking so far.
I love that topic. It's a good one. Thank you. Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any travel to report. I did attend a meeting of the JPA, the Joint Powers Authority. And I, non-government related but community related, attended the healing ceremony for poor Nax Benedict. And our local, I'm so happy that we were able to acknowledge Two-Spirit Day. And our local sisters really hosted a a very moving and healing moment for folks who are feeling that hurt very deeply and afraid for themselves or afraid for their loved ones who might express themselves the same way. I was very honored to be there, and I'm grateful for that, those folks in our community who take the time to put together what people need, whether it's funerals or healing, whatever you might call it. Folks needed something, and they provided that, and I'm grateful for that. Oh, and the 20, the general plan, if you are, the website now has like a totally functional, actually useful search function. So if you go and you look up on the city's website, if you just look up general plan, you'll get a couple of different things, but it's the 2040 general plan if you're looking to read it. And it is really pretty. Thank you.
Lots of great pictures. Councilmember Bauer?
Thank you. Yeah, I attended the Cal Cities Redwood Empire meeting too, which was great. We talked about renewable energy, trails, legislative bills. And it was great hanging out with all of our fellow council members from Willets and Yucaya and all these other great little towns. I attended Keep Urica Beautiful Tree Planting. And I want to say, people, you got to do it. You get to meet your neighbors. I met some really cool people. It was fun working with, you know, planting trees and meeting people in the neighborhood. So come join us next time. March 30th, oh, no, I'm traveling for Cal Cities for Environmental Quality Committee meeting here this, later this week. Should be a good time. And March 30th, Cooper Gulch will be doing, with Pack Out Green Team, will be doing cleanup and invasive species removal. So come on down about 9:00 AM. I think we're scheduled to do that. My chair just totally collapsed on me. Whatever. That'll be great. And then one more thing. Saturday, March 23rd, March 30th, and April 7th, the Historical Society will be having a bunch of the old Time Standard newspapers up from about the past 20 years to check out. It'll be at the Timber Heritage Association shop in Samoa. So come check out and look at what's been going on in our community over the past couple decades. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
Yeah, there we go. Thank you, Mayor. First off, thank you to staff for translating the participatory budget information into Spanish. I really appreciate that. This last weekend, I attended the Civic Well Policymakers Conference in Yosemite. The breakout sessions were really good, and the networking there was fantastic. I'm following up with some folks in Truckee here in another week or two to talk to them about their deed restricted for sale housing for low-income folks. I'm interested to see how they got that off the ground, but also ideas around energy innovations and solutions, and resiliency and recovering for disaster preparedness. And if we have it in our budget, I would really encourage staff to attend the California Climate and Energy Forum, also hosted by Civic Well in June later this year. Like Councilmember Castellano, I'm attending the Legislative Conference from League of Cities on Thursday for Government Transparency and Labor Relations Committee. Feel like I've been out of town forever. I'll return home someday. I participated in a ride-along with EPD just a few weekends ago, I think back on the 9th. Only two service calls, a lot of good conversation between myself and the officer. I think both of the calls that were handled were handled very well, very professionally. The first one involving a substance use issue, thankfully, EMTs were not needed on the scene. But, you know, it's the nature of our city at this time with mental health that the second call did require 51-50. So, I mean, it was definitely something to witness. No violence, no need for anything along those lines. If anything, I think they got that particular person the help that they needed just a little later in the day. So, and then like Councilmember Moulton, I also attended the I'm sorry, what would you call it? The healing that was?
I think they called it a healing ceremony. It wasn't exactly a funeral.
Right, right. It was an opportunity for the, for the community to come together, particularly trans community and the LGBT community, to just feel and emote. I think the sisters did a fantastic job in the fact that the Wiat were there, gave their piece and said some words, and that Two Feathers, Native American Family Services, were there just to let people know that there is support in this community. And looking forward to being an aspirant of the Sisters of Perpetual Indulgence, so.
Great. Thank you so much. I did neglect to say one thing in my council reports is look forward, May, March 4th, May 4th. That's, March 4th is already passed. May 4th, we'll be having a kickoff for May's Mental Health Month through the initiative. And we will be having, partnering with NAMI and some other different people. We're bringing a speaker in from Canada. And we're going to be having two panels, one professional and one lived experience. So put that on your calendar. It's going to be a great time. And with that, we're adjourned.